Okay, it's five o'clock. Would you like to begin the meeting?
We're gonna call the meeting to order.
Tuesday, oh, May seventh, twenty twenty four. First item on the agenda is closed session and I will note that closed session, item C is conference with real property negotiators, discussion concerning real property transaction, transactions in compliance with government code section five four nine five six point eight regarding real property negotiations, APN nine eight eight dash three nine three dash zero one and six nine two dash three nine three dash zero one, property located at one eleven hundred North El Camino Real. City negotiators, Andy Hall, city manager, negotiating parties, Novella Royale, and under negotiations are price and terms. And I have no speakers for closed session.
I move we adjourn to closed session and re- re-adjourn at closed session.
I'll second.
All right, any opposition?
It's not jeopardy for us. You say it and then you push the button.
Let's move to closed section. Any opposition? No? No? Okay, all in favor? Let's say aye. Aye, it's unanimous.
Well, are we using this thing or not?
Yeah, but there's a protocol. You you make, you either make your motion or second it and then you push the button. You don't lock everybody out to jump in and... I I mean, I I might be wrong.
Who made that rule?
Well, I think that that's what I was...
Did you want?
No, no, I I don't think so. I think I, I think I was told that by IT.
But also, we have a vote thing so that we can...
You can vote anytime you want. It's it's on the on the motions law. I, maybe I was given the wrong information. Maybe it is a race.
I don't know, that's the thing that'd be a good procedural thing though. Do we say it and then hit the second button or do we?
Typically what happens is normally the chairman would call for a motion. Do I have a motion? And then someone would say, I'd like to make a motion.
Yeah.
You guys, but hey.
It it's gotta be fluid when there's nobody here.
Yeah.
But it's not controversial.
Test, test, test. Test, 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 test. Check, check. Test. Test, 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 test. Test, 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 test. Test, 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 test.
Yeah. 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 Yeah.
We're gonna start any minute.
Is your, is your mic on?
Can, can, can it, I know. Can we have people take their seats? We're gonna start.
I'm just trying, I knew it was gonna take a couple of minutes to get them seated.
Okay, Mayor, would you like to call the meeting of May 7th, 2024 to order?
All right.
And first item on the agenda is the invocation given by Pastor Jim Wilkie of Calvary, South Orange County, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, we have, we have a...
Lord Jesus, thank you for this opportunity today to, to gather as, with our civic leaders and Lord who have you placed, entrusted them with the care over this city. And so, Lord, give them each wisdom and direction tonight with what they're to hear. And, Lord, just pray that you would bless each one, bless our, our first responders, our chief police, our fire captains and battalion chiefs, and all of those that are caring over this great city, Lord, that you would have your hand upon them. And, Lord, let, let what we do today be mindful of how we respect one another and care for one another and that what goes on in these, these council chambers, Lord, is bring glory and honor to you. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Thank you. Pledge of Allegiance, Karen Loughler, can you lead, lead us in that?
Please join me in honoring this wonderful country.
Pledge of Allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Roll call.
We will note that all council members are present.
All right.
And with that, we will begin special presentations. This evening, we have, the first item on the agenda is Mayor's Special Recognition. Mayor Cabral and the City Council would like to recognize a couple of special individuals.
We do have a couple of people that we want to recognize. The first one is Rick Loughler. Come on down, Rick. I have something for you. It sounds like money, no?
Come on down.
Rick, Rick, served for 50 years, let's just say, Rick served for 50 years as LAPD officer and had a lifetime of commendable service here to the city and with the Friends of San Clemente and others. And we let your 50th anniversary pass without recognition. And so, I, I thought it would be appropriate for the city to give you a plaque so that you can start in this competition and, and recognize you for all your hard work here and for the work that you do with, with your, the celebration of your 50th anniversary with LAPD.
Just a quick reminder. April 16th was the anniversary of me being sworn in to the Los Angeles Police Department. I only did like 37 years, so I, don't, don't, don't add all that. But I, this is very humbling. I, I, the last meeting, I, I thought when I said that this is my anniversary on the 16th, I thought it was gonna be at the end of the meeting when there was hardly anybody here. And Victor decided to do it at the beginning of the meeting. I had 75 rabid pickleballers in the audience who didn't really care anything about any of this. So, so I, I thank you, Victor. This is, this is a, a, a great honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We just thought that the city counts here. Thank you.
I'll get a picture.
All right.
Very nice. Okay, say, "Short meeting tonight."
Hold on, Laura's gonna leave before we sit down.
What's up?
Laura's gonna leave before the record.
Oh, sure.
There we are.
Oh, yeah. Well, you're not gonna be in it.
Yes, he is. Oh, yeah, yeah, come on, come on. He's gonna make his picture much, much better. Yeah. By the way, this, this is gonna be our Christmas card.
You just got a text from the IRS.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, you can send that to me and I'll send it to Laura.
Yes, next item on the agenda is Teacher Appreciation Week, and we are honoring Kristin De Perio, but she said that she may be a little late to the meeting and don't, is she here?
All right, let's put it on.
Oh, okay, great.
Do you wanna come down?
Perfect.
Do you wanna present this?
Sure, sure.
Just, there, there were two things. I mean, this is National, I guess, National Teachers Week. Teacher Appreciation Week. As a, as a city, as individuals more, we all have probably elementary school teachers, high school teachers, college teachers that have made a real difference in our life. And teachers do make a difference in our life. I mean, I, I think everybody has that experience, that they've, they've really made a big difference and, and sort of shaped your character. And I know you've done the same thing, and last week, there was awards, the Golden Apples. I couldn't make it to that. Crystal Apple Awards that were given, and you were one of those honorees, and we wanted to just recognize you here at the City Council. And Mark, who is a teacher, has that kind of influence on people day to day in school, and you know better than any of us what that influence is, so I'll let you present the award too.
Kristin, if you don't know Ms. De Perio, she is by far one of the best teachers at San Clemente High School. The kids love her. She also does an after-school tutoring program. She's on tons of leadership committees. She is just a rock star when it comes to her profession, and she's passionate about it. And like, she, she is the epitome of what a passionate, amazing, inspiring teacher is, especially for math. I wish I had you as a math teacher. Cause, and, and she's just a good person. So, I'm, I'm so proud to give this to you, to present it to you, Ms. De Perio, Kristin. So, well done. Oh, yeah, so Jay Bish, who couldn't come tonight, he's also an amazing teacher. I mean, Kristin and, and, they won their awards because the students at the school voted on who their favorite teachers were. And so, I haven't, wasn't. But Jay and Kristin, I mean, the, the kids just love them, and they are so enthusiastic about caring for their students and showing compassion to them. Jay also does, he puts on a, a weekly rock, not weekly, but once a year does a, a week where at the lunch, at lunch, the Battle of the Bands, they come in, student-led bands, and they rock out in the quad. And it gives them this great opportunity. He also leads the, the video production team and, and just all, all around, just another great person. The San Clemente High School really has some of the best teachers, I think, in, in the state. Yeah, and I'm very honored to include myself in, in there with that faculty, so.
We're waiting for you to win that, that, that award.
That'll be a while. My kids don't like me. I give, I give them too many tests, so.
Yeah, AP, yeah.
Kristin knows every Taylor Swift song by heart.
Yeah, yeah.
Any, any, like, request.
At the Chris, at the Crystal Apple Awards, your presentation was something else. She inspired a student to give one of the great recognition award speeches I think I've ever heard. It was absolutely hilarious, so I know you're inspiring great things in those classes. Thank you. Would you like to say anything, Kristin?
Um, thank you so much. Sorry I was late. I came from flag football practice, so San Clemente girls are having a flag football team this year.
You make them look very good. They make us look very bad.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The only other quick reminder that I wanted to make is that this is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And I, I mention it only because it's part of our, the national holidays and, and acknowledgements for our community. And I just think, you know, every city should remind ourselves of the diversity of our community, and this is a, a community that's part of, of the Orange County fabric. And I just wanted, for the record, to acknowledge that at the city and thank the Asian American community here in, in San Clemente and in Orange County. All right, let's get on to the next item, the Wall of Recognition Honorees.
And, and the first order of business would be to adopt the resolution 2464, approving the selection. Do we have?
I'll make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 2464.
I'm honored to second that.
All right, I guess, did you push the vote button?
I did.
Yep.
And that vote carries 5-0.
All right.
To recognize A. John Dory and Dick Vale as the 2024 Wall of Recognition recipients, and we do have certificates for each of them.
Let's, let's go ahead and do that, too. Thank you. We're back down. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try and read as much as I can, but Dick Vale, you wanna come up and we'll? Dick, congratulations. I'm gonna start reading this. I, I don't, you know, we, we presume everybody knows about you, but, you know, not everybody does, so I'm gonna read this. For the past 47 years, Dick has given his time, talent, and treasure to the community of San Clemente by making San Clemente a more enjoyable place to live, work, and play. Through his leadership in the beginning years of the Boys and Girls Club, he was instrumental pioneer, pioneering force that helped thousands of children reach their full potential. He was responsible for starting and running the annual golf tournament that has raised hundreds of thousands of dollars throughout the years. I've played in that. Dick's expertise in golf and his leadership skills have helped San Clemente Golf Committee and the Human Affairs Committee and the Beach and Parks Foundation fulfill their mission in helping San Clemente be a place where residents are proud of San Clemente's parks and recreation activities. Dick's family assistance ministries contributions include his role in 2017 as founding the first family emergency shelter in South Orange County where homeless, single dads, dual-parent households, pregnant women, and children have found safe shelter. Last year, FAM helped over 42,000 clients distributing 5 million pounds of food and dispersing 50,000 in client aid. Through the pandemic, Dick's leadership at FAM helped the city of San Clemente reach hundreds of clients that needed COVID relief funds and counseling, not to mention school backpacks, Christmas adoptive family, and turkey giveaways. So, on behalf of the city of San Clemente, I'm proud to offer this to you as our recognition and your, your acceptance on the Wall of Fame. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it.
We're gonna take, if you wanna make a comment?
Sure. Just briefly, I wanna thank you all for coming, all my friends and family. You guys are just terrific. Holly and I moved here in May of, of 2000, 101975. So, in next April, or actually, May 10th, we'll have been here 50 years. Holly was on the City Council Mayor in the 1980s, she was on the Parks and Recreation, so it's been a family deal here in San Clemente, and my son Mark is now on the Golf Committee. So, we're all part of the community, and we help and serve the community. So, I'm so grateful, blessed to have been here this, these almost 50 years and doing what I call God's work here in San Clemente. So, thank you for the recognition.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Congrats.
Good to see you.
Yes.
Thanks, Steve.
Can the family come up as well?
Absolutely.
The whole family?
Yeah, everybody.
Everybody.
Wait, wait, why don't we do a picture with the council?
Council person, yes, sure.
And the spouse.
Also, your aunt's a member, that's awesome.
All right, come on, Holly.
All right.
Honorable group.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for this.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right.
Yes. You're used to it.
Wait, wait, we got one more.
Oh.
The family, Anthony's family.
Absolutely. Andy, we're gonna have to go out in the hall to take it.
Oh, my gosh. Scoot down below.
Oh, Tio, Tio, Emilio, come here.
We'd have nobody left on the team.
Emilio, Emilio, Emilio. Emilio, come in. Come in, go. Emilio, you're holding it up.
We're gonna have to superimpose you if you don't come in.
All right, that's. Yeah, Emilio.
No, Tio.
Tio.
That should do it. Glad she's doing it.
Thanks for the applause, Emily.
One more, one more.
Actually, this, this is gonna be my Christmas card. Congratulations. Service will make some dick. Congratulations, well deserved.
Victor doesn't wanna read two in a row, so I'm gonna actually call up John Dory to the front here. Personal knowledge of John, and this is gonna kinda segue into the next Friends of San Clemente that's gonna do a little presentation here. And John is one of the founding members of Friends of San Clemente. That's one of the things he's done, and now I'm gonna find out everything else about you that I didn't even know. John Dory's leadership services provided outstanding value to the community. His leadership with Derail, Derail the Rail produced a beach trail that is used by San Clemente residents and millions of visitors and vacationers coming to San Clemente. John and the committee worked very hard over several years to create the kind of beach trail that was safe and beautiful for all. John also worked very hard with the Quiet Zone Committee to silence or at least reduce the volume of warning sounds coming from the passing trains. This was significant, a significant milestone for San Clemente for a quieter, more peaceful experience for residents and visitors of this beautiful scenic and natural stretch of San Clemente's coast. John is not only an outstanding leader, but he also worked incredibly hard at making sure every detail is taken care of at the events. From serving popcorn for the Friends of San Clemente events, Springtacular, Cinco de Mayo, Santa's Snow Hill, cleaning tables and chairs at the Carnival Colossal, and I can attest to that, the hardest working man in show business right here. Puts up golf tees and signs and pop-up tents for the Friends Foundation Golf Tournament, hangs banners, just to name a few things. John Dory has spent the last 26 years giving his time, energy, and experience to the improvement of all of San Clemente. The hours John has given to these projects, he has, has worked are, the hours John has given to the projects he has worked on are invaluable. Beginning in 1998 with the coastal trail, Derail the Trail, until today, still active on the Friends of San Clemente Foundation Board and the Sports Wall of Fame, he has worked very hard on all these projects that he commits to. The San Clemente Wall of Recognition has many great names on the wall. All have given so much to the city of San Clemente, and it would be fitting to include John Dory with a prestigious group of individuals.
I got through it.
Thank you. You wanna say a word?
Sure.
Just, just a couple of things before I have to stand here with these esteemed individuals. Thank you, first of all, I appreciate the recognition, but I couldn't have gotten this far if it wasn't for all these wonderful people in this town. Cause every time you have an idea or every time you need help, there's always someone in this community that will, that has your back or will come and help and sometimes take the lead on things, and, and you don't have to work as hard anymore. But I just wanted to say that I'm humbled to be here with Dick, who is one of the people who started when I was president of the Friends of San Clemente Foundation. He came on board and taught us how to have a, a golf tournament, and so, thank you, Dick. It's not on your list of things, but I, I, I will always remember that, and so, we've been running it since he's retired from it, including everyone in town. But thank you again. I have my, my daughter and my grandson here and my wife Linda. So, I can't compete with Dick when it comes to the number of people. We'll, we'll get him up here for a photo. Thank you so much.
And before we take the photo, I think we have Friends of San Clemente Beaches and Parks Foundation, and then I'll make the motion that we pass a resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, first and second. Is there discussion? All right, let's, I'll vote then.
Motion by Councilmember Lefler, second by Mayor Protim Inmire, carries five zero, and we do have a certificate of recognition.
All right. By the way, Mr.?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to, to acknowledge that I see that our police chief is in full uniform back there, and so is obviously back to full one hundred percent duty. Welcome back, Jay.
Thank you. Thank you, Jay.
We're gonna accept you, Jay. Are you gonna say something first?
Yes.
Actually, Samantha's gonna say something real quick at first. Come on, this side.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Samantha Wiley, the Beaches, Parks and Recreation Director. I have really the esteemed honor of being the city's liaison to this tremendous board and nonprofit organization that has served the city of San Clemente and its residents for over two decades now. I want to say that this group, their heart and passion and soul is with the community members. The donation that we are receiving tonight goes straight back to community events. Every effort that they put into it, we see in return through programs and events. A large portion of it is going to recreation scholarships to help those members of our community who are not able to afford camps and programs throughout the year, and that's all ages, youth and adults, as well as funding a large portion of the Fun on the Run Mobile Recreation Program, and that allows us to keep that service free to our kids in the community, and a whole series of events, including the beach concerts. We're able to add two more concerts this summer because of the Friends donations, so that just kind of captures a little bit of what they do, but I do greatly appreciate their commitment and service to the, really, the community of San Clemente. So thank you.
Thank you, Samantha. I'm just gonna touch on a little bit more of that, and give you a little bit of history for the Friends. My name's Brian DeLaPointe. I got involved in the Friends a couple of years ago because of John, and we've, it's incredible that the support from the city, the relationship with the city. So just a little history. The Friends Foundation was formed twenty-two years ago by Bill, Bill Thomas and Tom Wick for the purpose of augmenting funding for the City of San Clemente Beaches, Parks, and Recs Department. Soon, the addition of Norb Garrett, Don Kindred, John Dory, and Dan Feinberg were added. The foundation received their five oh one C three status, and a partner with the City of San Clemente was formed. Our, our primary fundraising sources are, we have an annual golf tournament, which is coming up June twenty-first. We sold out, I think, within forty-eight hours. It's, it's a fun, fun deal, so we have a great relationship with the guys down at the municipal golf course, and then our four-day carnival up at Vista Hermosa. Those are our two primary fundraisers, and we're looking for new ways to raise money and get creative, and just so we can do more in the community. So a couple of our past projects that we've done is we provide computer training for over one thousand seniors, funding the initial construction of Courtney Sandcastle Park and funding to extend the city trolley service. The foundation funds the following programs on a continuing annual basis. The Snow Hill that everybody loves down at the library, at the Glitz during the Christmas time, the Springtacular Easter egg hunt, the Sports Wall of Fame, which I think John's gonna talk a little bit about maybe, which is coming up next weekend, the May eighteenth. Fun on the Run, which is an after-school program, Red Ribbon Week, Monster Dash 5K around Halloween, Cinco de Mayo Celebration, and then a bunch of summer camp scholarships for kids around, which is get kids active, that's what we're all about. In addition to these programs, we've got a couple new things that we got to do this year. In two thousand twenty-three, we got a new drone for the lifeguard so they can get out and keep us safe, do training, for me, look for sharks, make sure we, we, we're all, we're all safe there. So they're, they're doing a lot of cool things with that. We had the opportunity to, to go and get new sports equipment for all the elementary schools this year. We are in the process of getting a new playground surface at San Gregorio Park and two new palapas down at Los Winds Beach, which is also used for beach volleyball in the high school. So far this year, we're getting close to a hundred thousand dollars, and with a lifetime, a lifetime contribution of getting close to a million dollars, which we're, we're super proud of. The Friends of San Clemente was, was named Nonprofit of the Year by the Chamber of Commerce this year, and we continue to be the only nonprofit with an exclusive contract with the city to provide the gap funding for so many essential programs. So today, on behalf of the Friends, we'd like to present the city with a check for fifty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. And we'll have much more of that to come, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Well, on behalf of the city, thank you very much for this, this check. Maybe the city council can figure out a way to spend it.
Show me the money.
But, let's take a photo. One more, Andy, because I forgot, on behalf of the city, we have.
Mayor detail.
So let me hand that to you. You've said it all.
Did you want to remind anybody about the Sports Wall of Fame?
Yeah.
John, say a couple of words about the Wall of Fame coming up here.
Yeah, I'll be real quick with this. On the eighteenth of May at five thirty in the afternoon, we're open for business, so to speak, down at the Aquatic Center at Vista Hermosa Sports Park. We have, we will celebrate three new inductees. A Mary Lou Drummy, who is an incredible surfer, broke the gender barrier when it came to judging internationally for men and women, and placed fifth in, in the United States Open, and won a number, she's been in over a hundred, hundred surfing things. I've got six or seven awards that she's won over the years, but I'll save that for the night of the event. Also, Jerry Last, Lester, Lester, Jeremy Lester, he is an Olympian, nineteen ninety-six, a water polo, Stanford All-American. I mean, his credentials are staggering, and we'll be inducting him as well. And Tim Burton, who was a cross-country coach for the last fifty years, and a standout track and football player here at San Clemente High School, and came back after coaching for forty-three years at Dana Hills and winning like six state titles, came back and coached our team to a state title. So he will be inducted as well. So we've got three outstanding people to put on the wall, and I urge everyone who's watching this somewhere, and the people in the room, to come, and it starts, the ceremony starts at six thirty. Doors open at five thirty at the Aquatic Center on the fifth, on the eighteenth. Thank you so much.
Get that check from Victor. Good job. Brian, by the way, played seven years at the M L. Hard to figure that out. That catcher's maybe had a shaking his head. All right, let's, let's move on to oral.
Oral communications, and I will call the first three speakers up. Please sit in the second row here. Joe Wilson, Susie Whitelaw, Mike K. Joe Wilson, come on up. Thank you.
I wonder what you're gonna talk about.
You never know.
Hey, it's great to be here tonight. We've had some terrific news coming in about the beaches and coordination with OCTA and the inclusion of sand in their current proposal for remediating and protecting the tracks. So kudos to all of you guys, Andy, you too. Thank you for going to Sacramento and speaking up. Real quickly tonight, just what I want to do is, we have this good news that they're including sand in their proposal, not just boulders. I think the devil's in the details, and we've been talking quite a bit with Save Our Beaches Today and so forth, and long story short, we're hoping that the city would be willing to engage to try and organize a cadre, a consortium, if you will, of experts, oceanographers, OCTA representatives, other engineers, we have resources within our group, Les's group, to create a, a technical advisory group to OCTA to finalize the design, how much sand, where the sand's gonna go, how it's gonna get installed with the boulders. The, the details of all of that are gonna be really crucial, for example, for the sand staying around, for the boulders not being so wide as the current proposal. There's a lot of work there that I think a good technical group could help with, so please consider that. We believe that would speak volumes for the city's involvement and to make the project better. Last thing, I think I sent a note to all of you, and I hope I can let the public know tonight, if that's okay. This Friday, at Los Molinos Brewery, we're having an activity where it's an informational community event for people to come, listen to music, have a beverage, learn more about what Save Our Beaches is doing, and to get involved. So again, thank you so much for all your efforts so far. Let's hang in there, we're gonna make great progress on this.
Thank you very much.
Much appreciate it.
Susie Whitelaw, followed by Mike K., followed by Amanda Q.
Hi, I have a presentation. I'm gonna start with the oldest OCTA project at Cypress Shores. Save Our Beaches has been working for two years, asking for adequate mitigation for the loss of this beach. OCTA started their bid at three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar fees, and it's now up to potentially thirteen million. Last week, we met with Coastal Commission staff who asked us who should be the lead agency, and we said the city should be the lead agency to bring the sand back to that beach, not OCTA, who plans to use the money instead for its new destructive project. Next slide. There are projects both at the north end and the south end of San Clemente. Next slide. In northern San Clemente, they plan on placing riprap about the same amount as they put at Cypress Shores from the south end of North Beach to Linda Lane, and about fifty feet of sand in front, which is where it will not stay very long. The sand needs to be placed at North Beach where it can restore a hundred and fifty-foot wide beach that would provide both recreational and ecological value, instead of just being washed away. Next slide, please. At the south end of town, there's a small hotspot of erosion, and OCTA proposes to install a fifty-foot wide rock revetment across the entire San Clemente State Beach. Next slide. This rock would cover the entire dry sand beach, as shown on the rectangle on the right. Again, they propose to put about fifty-foot wide sand in front of these rocks, which will quickly wash away. It's just too little sand. There's a lot more wrong with this project they show there, but I can't go into details. Next slide, please. Here's three scenarios, the existing condition, OCTA proposal, and our proposal. The black line is the railroad, the yellow is the sand, the ocean would be at the bottom on each one of these. There's actually existing rock revetments in gray and earthen embankments in brown, except for one short area, the seven-hundred-foot hotspot number four. So they're proposing a thirty-five-hundred-foot-long revetment with a little bit of sand in front, and how long will that last? It's just common sense, it's, that's gonna wash away pretty quickly. What we're asking them instead at the bottom line, bottom scenario, is just to repair that small area without putting in the whole rock revetment, then put some sand in front while they figure out a more long-term plan. Next slide, please. One other problem, look at the cost in the red circle. For, they're asking for a hundred and twenty-five million dollars. Our beaches should be getting two million cubic yards of sand, not half a million cubic yards of sand. Next slide, please. There's just something wrong with this plan. I say that we should give that two, a hundred and twenty-five million dollars to our city to act as a lead agency for the sand restoration. We, we can't trust OCTA. They're not doing the best thing for our beaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie, for all you do for the city.
Mike K., followed by Amanda Q., followed by Patricia Holloway.
Counsel, Ms. Mayor, the previous two speakers really focused on what I wanted to bring up, so I'm a little bit scrambling here, but there are a couple of little subjects that I do want to focus again. Two weeks ago, I, I said this, and I'll say it again, I'd really like to see it agendas that we put up some type of a riprap issue under our municipal code. We empower our people, we make it a code violation to go ahead and dump boulders haphatily over the side of tracks. Citizens couldn't do that if I dumped boulders over into my neighbor's yard or into a park or something. Of course, code would come right down on me. Why does OCTA get to do this? They know it's a violation, they're paying a thirteen-plus-million-dollar fine to do it. It seems ridiculous to me. I would like to see our city empowered. We don't have to enforce it, but it would be nice, and I think it's very symbolic, and on occasion, we may have to enforce it. So I want to bring that up and ask you to follow through on what sounded like was gonna happen. A second thing is the thirteen-plus-million that we're gonna get as an offset for the violations, the dumping over the side that went on by OCTA of all those boulders. I'd like to see that money used in front of the areas where the damage was done. That thirteen million is calculated by establishing how much real estate essentially was taken up. They look at how many square feet, square meters are gone, lost to this dumping, and then Coastal Commission comes up with a figure. It seems a pretty cheap way to do things. I, it, it's frustrating to me. I live in the area where some of this was done, and it doesn't seem right that, say, another area around the Pier Bowl or North Beach, wherever, they get a bunch of sand or whatever from that thirteen million, or the thirteen million goes into some, something completely unrelated. That doesn't feel right to me as a, a resident of the south side of our town where all this damage was done, where I can no longer walk from one side to the other. So I wish you guys would look into some of the details on, on where that money's gonna go. I've heard some rumors, but it would be nice if the lion's share went to where the damage was done. That seems fair to me. Anyway, let me just reemphasize what, what the two previous speakers were saying. We really do need to get some technical people. Mike Levin brought this up in a conversation just a few days ago, and so he's very aware, and that's what his words were, that's the next step. We need to get the technical people from our city, from OCTA, from Coastal Commission, from non-governmental organizations to agree, what is the slope? What is the elevation? What type of sand? Are we gonna compact it, or are we just gonna set fluffy sand on there? Where exactly is it gonna go? How many feet out is it gonna go? All these details are very, very important stuff, and it would be yards of sand. Next slide, please. There's just something wrong with this plan. I say that we should give that $125 million to our city to act as a lead agency for the sand restoration. We can't trust OCTA. They're not doing the best thing for our beaches. Thank you.
Thank you, Susie, for all you do for the city.
Mike K., followed by Amanda Q., followed by Patricia Holloway.
Counsel, Ms. Mayor. The previous two speakers really focused on what I wanted to bring up. So I'm a little bit scrambling here, but there were a couple of little subjects that I do want to focus again. Two weeks ago, I said this, and I'll say it again. I'd really like to see it agendized, that we put up some type of a riprap issue under our municipal code. We empower our people. We make it a code violation to go ahead and dump boulders haphazardly over the side of tracks. Citizens couldn't do that. If I dumped boulders over into my neighbor's yard or into a park or something, of course, code would come right down on me. Why does OCTA get to do this? They know it's a violation. They're paying a 13-plus-million-dollar fine to do it. It seems ridiculous to me. I would like to see our city empowered. We don't have to enforce it, but it would be nice. I think it's very symbolic, and on occasion, we may have to enforce it. So I want to bring that up and ask you to follow through on what sounded like was going to happen. A second thing is the 13-plus million that we're going to get as an offset for the violations, the dumping over the side that went on by OCTA of all those boulders. I'd like to see that money used in front of the areas where the damage was done. That 13 million is calculated by establishing how much real estate essentially was taken up. They look at how many square feet, square meters are gone, lost to this dumping, and then Coastal Commission comes up with a figure. It seems a pretty cheap way to do things. It's frustrating to me. I live in the area where some of this was done, and it doesn't seem right that, say, another area around the Pier Bowl or North Beach, wherever, they get a bunch of sand or whatever from that 13 million. Or the 13 million goes into something completely unrelated. That doesn't feel right to me as a resident of the south side of our town, where all this damage was done, where I can no longer walk from one side to the other. So I wish you guys would look into some of the details on where that money's going to go. I've heard some rumors, but it would be nice if the lion's share went to where the damage was done. That seems fair to me. Anyway, let me just reemphasize what the two previous speakers were saying. We really do need to get some technical people. Mike Levin brought this up in a conversation just a few days ago, and so he's very aware, and that's what his words were, that's the next step. We need to get the technical people from our city, from OCTA, from Coastal Commission, from non-governmental organizations to agree, what is the slope? What is the elevation? What type of sand? Are we going to compact it? Are we just going to set fluffy sand on there? Where exactly is it going to go? How many feet out is it going to go? All these details are very, very important stuff, and it would be nice to get a deeper level of understanding and someone from our side to advocate. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Q., followed by Patricia Holloway, followed by Bill Prutenger.
I have a PowerPoint presentation, please. Next slide, please. There have been alarming articles that do not accurately state the facts. There was no retraction from the OC register regarding the $200 million half-mile wall. Next slide, please. At a recent OCTA meeting, Mr. Johnson clarified the $200 million amount that they had never brought this before the OCTA. Next slide, please. The OCTA has been a partner with our city of San Clemente for years now, and they entered into a cooperative agreement regarding the LPPE. And this is a letter from Mr. Johnson to the former TCA CEO, Mike Crayman, and it was regarding the AB 382 Assembly Bill that Rocky Chavez had introduced. And it's important is that he included the statement that, to Mike Crayman, that the letters appear to be out of context, are potentially misleading, and overlook the regional planning process. So he's always been the one to put out the facts. Next slide, please. In 2024, in January, the initial assessment did call for the sand replenishment as a solution. Next slide, please. Before March 20th OCTA listening session, Mr. Hall had already been speaking to the OCTA CEO regarding a commitment for sand replenishment, which was already in that initial assessment, January of 2024. Next slide, please. The OCTA has always been working with our city and helping to bring sand, and he, Mr. Johnson, wrote a letter to the US Army Corps of Engineers, trying to piggyback on the US Army Corps of Engineers' current sand nourishment project, and they've always been willing to be a partnership with the US Army Corps of Engineers and, next slide, please, and working with the city manager. Following the Senate hearing, the OCTA issued a press release, which said that we've said throughout the study process and is part of the solution, as eroding beaches continue to pose a threat to rail operations. And, you know, I don't want to be ungrateful, but if they're thinking that they're going to help us in supplying or, you know, having this contribution of 64 million to 145 million, I think anybody is ungrateful to do that. Next slide, please. And here's even a Metro link that they even decide that sand replenishment is necessary. Thank you.
The time's expired, but thank you for your comments.
Yeah, it says four seconds, so it's flashing, so that's kind of threw me out there.
All right. Do we have any other?
Patricia Holloway, followed by Bill Prutenger, and those are the final two speakers.
Should I start?
Yeah, your time is.
Oh, okay, pardon me. Patricia Holloway, 40 years, living and working in San Clemente. I'm here tonight to express my thanks to the city Public Works and Maintenance Departments for organizing a super-successful Arbor Day event last Saturday at Jim Johnson Memorial Park. City staff and about 50 to 60 volunteers planted 30 canopy trees. About half were California-native Coast Live oak trees, our wonderful oaks, and about half were camphor trees. All of these will provide much-needed shade for all the families out there watching their kids play on the soccer fields. In particular, I'd like to thank Randy Little, our maintenance supervisor, and I believe it's Brian Fields, who directed the friendly, hard-working crews out there, who excavated all the tree wells for us to plant. I also want to express my appreciation to the San Clemente Garden Club, which I'm a proud member of, Citizens Climate Education, also a proud member of, San Clemente and Sunrise Rotary Clubs. They all fundraised, donated the funds to the city to purchase all the 24-inch box trees, and they were all out there volunteering that day at the event. I want to thank the city for promoting the event by posting it on the city's website, in the San Clemente Times. I guess there was a banner in downtown San Clemente, and that way, local residents, apart from these groups, were able to learn about Arbor Day, and they came out, young and old. One woman decided to celebrate her birthday at the park, and she brought 10 of her friends, who brought, you know, shovels. So finally, I'd like to urge the city to keep this momentum going by budgeting funds specifically for tree planting along our streets, at city facilities, in our parks. Many trees in town have succumbed to disease and storm damage, and frankly, old age. So as a Tree City USA, we must reverse the trend of removing more trees than we plant, because that's kind of where we're at. We're starting to overcome that. I think we need to overcome that. So if we can specifically budget in our budget, you know, for tree planting, that way, we'll be restoring Ole Hanson's visions of, you know, tree-filled and tree-lined streets, you know, in our community, and also expanding our urban forest for future generations. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I have a presentation. Thank you very much. Good evening, City Council. I haven't been by in a while. I'm here to report on the semi-annual countywide auxiliary communications exercise that took place on Saturday, May 4th. Next slide, please. The Orange County Sheriff's Department and Orange County RACs run these exercises twice a year, once in May and again in October. They've been running them in the current, I don't know how long they've run them, but they've been generally in the current form for about the last three and a half years. Next slide, please. Your local emergency communications team is Tri-Cities RACs, serving Dana Point, San Clemente, and San Juan Capistrano. We participate in the THIS and OTHER exercises on a weekly basis, and we do all that to make sure that our equipment is working, that our skills are up to snuff, and that our procedures are suitable for the tasks that we might be called to assist with. Next slide, please. This exercise had five elements. The first was a local simplex net, and simplex just means directly from one radio to another, without the use of repeaters. Whenever we do these exercises, we operate as though power were out and the repeaters are down. So the local simplex is where I, as the chief radio officer, basically ping my team and gather as many check-ins and situation reports over voice as I can. The second exercise is the regional simplex VHF net, where OC RACs people up at the Loma Ridge County EOC basically do a roll call of all the cities, and I relay our check-ins and our situation reports by voice up to them. There's a 60-meter exercise on the 5 megahertz band, which is a very important band. It's actually the only one where the federal government, county government, and amateur radio and RACs groups all share that band. There's a WindLink exercise, and WindLink is a very interesting service. It's email over radio waves. ARDAN is the amateur radio emergency data network. There was an element, an ARDAN element at this exercise, where we tried text messages, VoIP calls, and to transfer ICS forms over microwave links. Next slide, please. Ooh, you kind of went fast there. Can we back it up a bit? Thank you. We were successful at the local simplex and the regional simplex. 60 meters, we sure tried. I set up a bunch of gear on Ridge Line Trail, and I could hear Loma Ridge, I could hear other stations, but no one apparently could hear me. So we're still working on that.
All right. Unfortunately.
Am I out of time?
You're out of time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But thank you.
Would you go to the last one, just so they can see it? It's a great one. I know we all love our Marines.
We have a.
I didn't see I was out of time. I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you for your presentation.
That is all for oral communications. Next item on the agenda is motion, waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Someone want to make that motion? Is there a second? All right. All those in favor?
It just went blank. Let's see here. That was.
Let's just take it, can we take an oral vote? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous.
Carries 5-0.
5-0, carries. Next item on the agenda, closed session.
Next item on the agenda is consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action.
Is there any item that someone's proposing for immediate action? Hearing done, we'll move on to the next item.
Closed session report, city attorney.
Thank you. The city council met in closed session on item A. There was action, there was no reportable action and direction was given. They met in closed session on item B. There was no action taken, direction was given, and they met in closed session on item C. There was no action, reportable action, and there was direction given. Thank you.
Thank you for your counsel.
Next item is staff communications, and I do not believe we have any staff communications.
Any staff communications? No, no staff communications. We'll open up the public hearing then.
Moving on to public hearings. The public hearing process includes a staff presentation, a presentation by the applicant not to exceed 10 minutes, and public testimony not to exceed three minutes per speaker. Following closure of the public hearing, the city council will respond to questions raised during the hearing, discuss the issues, and act upon the matter by motion. The first public hearing that we have this evening is the Ninth Public Hearing and Adoption, Second Reading of an Ordinance Finalizing the District Map to Bring the Pier Bowl Community of Interest into One District. And would you?
All right, we have to open up the public hearing.
Please open the public hearing.
Let's open up the public hearing, item 7A, Ninth Public Hearing on Adoption and Second Reading of the Ordinance Finalizing the District Map. So do we have any?
This is a public hearing to consider adoption of map 120. We do have one public speaker. Would you like to hear that?
Hear him now, yeah.
Amanda Q.
So this is my ninth public hearing, so might as well say this again. So I'm in support of map 120, since it meets the legal requirements, as stated, to the extent practicable, the geographic integrity of any local neighborhood or local community of interest should be respected and included with a single district. Oh my gosh, I can't even read my own writing. For purposes of its effective and fair representation in a manner that minimizes its division, a community of interest is a population that shares common interests, common social-economic interests that should be included within a single district for the purposes of its effective and fair representation. The Pier Bowl is part of the Pier Bowl specific plan, and also, a council-district boundaries should be easily identifiable and understandable by residents, to the extent practicable. And council-districts shall be bounded by natural and artificial barriers, by streets or by boundaries of the city. And I'm definitely in support of map 20, and thank you so much. I really appreciate this fixing map 109 to include the Pier Bowl area. Thank you so much.
All right. So we should close the public hearing. We'll close the public hearing. And do we want to have debate or discussion on that, or someone want to make a motion to?
I'll move that we adopt ordinance number 1775.
Is there a second? I just have one comment. This is the ninth hearing on this. I think we all agree that map 120 meets the requirements. I have, I changed my vote after the last hearing, because, as I've said repeatedly, we don't have the legal authority to take this action, and that's, I've outlined that in several hearings that there's been before, but that's still my position, that we don't have the legal authority as granted by the state of California. All right. So any other discussion, or do you want to move to?
A motion has been made, it's been seconded.
I'll call the questions. All right. Oh, wait, 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 wait. All right. All right. Next item on the agenda.
Actually, Mayor, let me, if I may, just read the, that was a motion by council member Lefler, second by council member Noblock, carries 4-1 with Mayor Cabral voting no, to adopt ordinance number 1775 entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Clemente, California, Amending San Clemente Municipal Code Section 2.04.11 to Finalize the District Map and Bring the Pier Bowl Community of Interest into One District," District Number Three.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask something of the city manager? Now that it's been adopted, could we create a very clear district map that we can publish with all the streets and boundaries very clearly defined?
We will. We'll make it so that you can zoom in and see every street, even every lot, so that you know what zone you're in. We'll color-code it, so you can make it very easy to determine what zone you're in. Okay, thank you.
So next item, 7B, has been.
Correct.
Put over to the next meeting as well, 7C?
Yes, so if I may just make an announcement, Mayor. Item 7B, Public Hearing on Conduit Financing for the Mendocino at Talega 1 Apartments Affordable Housing Project, and item 7C, Public Hearing on Conduit Financing for Mendocino at Talega 2 Apartments Affordable Housing Project, have both been continued to the meeting of May 21st. The public hearings have also been readadvertised.
Okay.
For that date and time.
All right. Thank you. Unfinished business, we have none. New business, item 9A, you want to report on that?
Yes, moving on to item 9A, Consideration of a 50-Year Time Capsule in City Hall Council Chambers Proposed by the San Clemente Historical Society. We have since had a request from the Historical Society to table this item, so this agenda item is also being pulled from tonight's agenda.
All right. We will pull it from the agenda, and we'll.
Moving on to item 9B, Consideration of a Resolution to Adopt a Recommendation of the Public Safety Committee and Initiate an Ordinance to Amend the San Clemente Municipal Code to Include Additional Regulations on the Use and Enforcement of Electric Bicycles. And I believe Danielle Sorhan is here to give a presentation.
All right.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Danielle Sorhan. I'm the Code Compliance Manager here at the city, and this evening, I bring before you a request from the Public Safety Committee to initiate an ordinance to amend the San Clemente Municipal Code regarding e-bike regulations. As part of their 2023-2024 work plan, the Public Safety Committee was tasked with evaluating e-bike safety and providing any recommendations. So the existing provisions under the San Clemente Municipal Code Section 12.32.130 address the use of bicycles and electric bicycles at the pier, beach access road, beach, and beach trail. These regulations delineate specific areas where these bikes are permitted or restricted. However, they do not provide comprehensive coverage for e-bike usage throughout the city. At the March 26, 2024 Public Safety Committee meeting, the committee submitted proposed regulations to improve safety for pedestrians and e-bike riders. These proposals were developed after reviewing best safety practices from other cities and considering the local needs of the community. The following safety measures were endorsed from the committee. So the first one was operator age and licensing, restricting e-bike operation during nighttime unless the operator is at least 18 years old or holds a valid driver's license. The second one is passenger restrictions, requiring operators to be 18 years or older or to possess a valid driver's. or older or to possess a valid driver's license to carry passengers. Prohibited actions, banning stunts such as wheelies and endo-wheelies, and prohibiting texting while operating e-bikes on highways, roadways, or sidewalks. Additionally, uh, trail and beach trail restrictions, prohibiting class three e-bikes on all public off-road trails within San Clemente with a focus on the beach trail and surrounding areas. Another one is the completion of a safety course post violation, mandating completion of a city-approved e-bike safety course for any e-bike-related conviction with proof of completion required within ninety days. Additionally, we're looking to regulate the rental businesses, to require e-bike rental businesses to provide renters with a copy of these regulations. So based on the committee's extensive review and deliberations on March twenty-six, the committee recommends that the city council initiate an ordinance to amend the San Clemente Municipal Code to include these enhanced safety measures throughout the city. This concludes my presentation, I'm available to answer any questions. I also have, uh, Public Safety Committee Chair Nick Burkuta here, and he's happy to answer, answer any questions you might have, thank you.
All right, all right, we, we want to start with, uh, public comments if there's some.
We have one speaker, Donna Vedrine.
Good evening, council members. I am supportive of approving the recommendation by the Public Safety Committee to create an ordinance to include additional regulations on the use and enforcement of electric bicycles in San Clemente. The use and popularity of electric bicycles presents new challenges for public safety in our neighborhoods and community spaces. The Public Safety Committee addressed concerns by, by San Clemente residents to include prohibiting e-bikes not to be ridden on the San Clemente Beach Trail or ridden on the sidewalks in any business district. The recommendations by the Public Safety Committee include no texting while operating an e-bike, no stunt such as wheelies on any road or sidewalk, and addresses operation of e-bikes while carrying passengers and after dark. There needs to be enforcement identified for violations in the written ordinance if this resolution to write an ordinance is approved tonight. I applaud the recommendation to include the completion of a city-approved e-bike safety course to adjudicate any conviction of a violation of the San Clemente Municipal Code or the California Vehicle Code related to the operation of an e-bike in San Clemente. This creation of an ordinance to increase public safety related to e-bike operations is staff time and money well utilized, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And we do have one more speaker, Mike Kay.
All right, Mike. Mr. Kay.
Council, I have a seventeen-year-old daughter and an eighteen-year-old daughter, and we've had e-bikes here in town since the pandemic. I have seen, I've witnessed firsthand some of their friends doing some horrific things, I've gotten into it with my kids regarding the abuse of the e-bikes. Certainly there needs to be, uh, additional regulation of e-bike use in our town. Certainly, kids riding without helmets, no lights at night, not stopping, for adults and for kids, not stopping at stop signs, that's unacceptable, et cetera, et cetera, I could go on. But in listening to these recommendations, I can't help but feel that sixteen, seventeen, eighteen-year-olds and their parents aren't fully taken into account, and I would ask that you open, you do not vote on this yet, but you do vote on it, that we do have increased regulation, but that you have an open period, an open, a hearing whereby you can get additional information from the public at large, from schools, from kids, from parents, et cetera, and that in some areas, perhaps those regulations are even expanded, but in some areas, I think you might overreach, I think eighteen is, is a, is a, is a bit of a reach, I think sixteen might be a better, better age for some stuff. And I say that with, with two kids that I love and worry about every time they ride their e-bikes. But e-bikes play an important role, my kids are now driving cars, I'm convinced they are better automobile drivers for having the experience of being out on the road on an e-bike. So there's some upside to having our young people using those e-bikes as long as they're properly regulated, and I wish that these regulations maybe were fine-tuned just a little bit. Thanks.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Is that, that's the last comment?
That is it for speakers, yes.
All right, uh, well, let's open it up to, to questions from members, including, I'll ask the first one. This was sent to the, the committee, uh, quite a while ago, right? And they've been studying, have they held hearings on, on this, and?
They've had a, a number of discussions, and they've done quite a bit of research, reaching out to other cities, best practices, evaluating the current vehicle code as it pertains to e-bikes, so they've, they've really done their homework and have investigated this quite thoroughly.
Okay.
So the, the recommended action this evening is to, is to go forward with drafting an ordinance, so the exact language of the ordinance, including sanctions, penalties, fines, enforcement, hasn't really been addressed yet.
No, that's correct.
And, and if we do move forward, we'll have a number of hearings, we'll have a hearing at the first reading, the second reading. I'd like to hear, is, is Captain Christian in the?
He's in the back, yeah.
In the back there? I'd like to hear, if he has an opportunity, I'd like to hear his thoughts on, on the enforcement issues relating to these recommendations.
I think he's on the phone right now.
Well, 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 if, if he's available, we'll, we'll get him up here. Let's, anybody else here? Let me see, check my list here. I have no speakers.
Are we going into discussion right now, or?
You were in a discussion, yeah.
Okay. I, I, I think this is long overdue, this is wonderful for the city to actually start enforcing these, these issues. I think talking to our, our firefighters and, and our police officers, the issue that they're being called out most on is injuries to these kids who are on these e-bikes, and just every day, someone's getting injured on it. So this will absolutely help, I'm incredibly enthusiastic about seeing these implemented. There was only one on there that I thought maybe we went a little bit too far on, and that is on no riding at night for those under eighteen. I can see that being a little bit problematic, especially during the winter months when kids have sports, after-school sports that go in, you know, six o'clock, seven o'clock at night, and they need to get home. I think there might be a way to, to tweak that, to say you need to have a light on your bike. I have a light on my bike, I ride it at night when I, when I need to, and having that light is, is really important. I've almost hit a kid at night because he had no reflection on his bike and no light on it, so I think there's a way around that, instead of absolutely limiting it, saying, you know, you need to, we need to be able to see you somehow, and if we can't see you, then we can enforce that. But with, other, other than that, I think everything else in here is, is fantastic, and I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing something drafted coming our way.
Follow up, follow up on Mr. Enmire's comments if I could, isn't item three of the bike rule recommendations, didn't that cover what Mr. Enmire was just referring to? I didn't hear that during the presentation, was I distracted at that time?
The lights?
The lights, yeah.
It, it is in there.
It's, it's listed in number three in the agenda packet, I didn't hear it when you were doing your oral presentation, but it does cover what Mark was talking about.
The, the lights at night required on the e-bike.
Right.
Yes, I believe that that is included in there as well.
Yes, I, I just want to make sure that the, the age issue on there, though, that, that they could still be able to ride even if they're.
Even if they're not eighteen.
Even if they're not eighteen. Again, just thinking of our high schoolers, they've got to get, you know, to practice, other things, yeah.
All right, did you want to make that same request to the captain? Do you, will, will you be available to take a question?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to ask Captain Christian his thoughts on, on these rules and the department's enforcement of, of these rules.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I was out on the phone call, I apologize, so I heard this coming up, I did hear a few comments that were being made regarding some of the changes or some of the laws that, or municipal codes that they'd like to see constructed regarding this. Just real quick, like on the lighting, that's already covered by the California Vehicle Code, and so all bikes, regardless whether they're electric bikes or, or they're pedal bikes, have to have lighting, they have to have forward-facing white light, and they have to have rear reflectors at least in the back, so, um, that's covered under the California Vehicle Code. Some of the other issues I think were, that I heard being brought up were the age limits for riding it at night. I did say during my time with the Public Safety Committee that I didn't agree with that one for the same reason, and I think there was also like a caveat, whether, whether or not they're licensed, they have a valid driver's license. It wouldn't be enforceable for us, we can't pull over vehicles and do license status checks, so we regulate under, you know, Fourth Amendment, we can't just stop vehicles, so I fall along the same lines as, we can't stop bikes just to check a license status and see if they are of age or valid license, so I would have an issue with that one. I think the question was enforcement, how, how would it be for the officers to do enforcement? It's a tricky situation, I think this is garnering so, so much attention because there is a small group, I would say, that have kind of, you know, the bad apples that make it, that we need to regulate e-bikes for everybody, and that's, that's a shame, because I know there's plenty of people out there, kids and adults, that do ride their e-bikes properly, in, in a good manner, stopping at stoplights and stop signs and all that, but again, those are all violations of the vehicle code as well, and I do know that we do enforcement on bicycles, whether they're e-bikes or regular bikes, when they commit those violations. I don't know if that answered your question.
It, it does, I wanted to ask you also, I want, I want to ask you also, in other cities that the sheriff's department provides police services, are you aware of any particular issues, good, bad, or indifferent, that has arisen with e-bike enforcement in any of the other cities?
I know it's a challenge everywhere with all the contract cities in discussing this issue with the chief in Dana Point. It sounds to me that they kind of went away from coming up with some new municipal codes for e-bike enforcement, and it was a concern of mine, too, with the Public Safety Committee, was do, do we want to try to fix one thing yet create more of a problem by, by doing this? And what I mean by that in specific, through experience, like listening to my deputies and them trying to conduct some of these bicycle stops, there is that group, that element that decides that they don't have respect for enforcement and want to flip the bird and, and take off, so we have to weigh, my guys out in the streets have to weigh, to have to balance safety versus, what are we doing this for, are they going to get a citation for some sort of helmet violation? Yet are we creating a more dangerous environment by trying to chase somebody when they're running from us? So we have to balance that every day, and it's not worth it, because I would not like to see a kid end up hitting a, a car, falling off and getting injured just because we wanted to give him a citation for a helmet ticket or whatever one of these other municipal codes might be, but it's a tough one, and in talking to, uh, Chief Hilton up in Dana Point, they kind of went the other direction. I, I know, for example, they were talking about, just as we were, no riding on the sidewalks, um, I mentioned it's probably not a good idea if we're forcing kids into the street, and heaven forbid a kid get hit during drop-off at one of the local schools, and now we've put them in that position to get hurt because we said you cannot ride on the sidewalk, so I know that one was, uh, not recommended to you, to you guys, but there, there's definitely some issues, it'll, it'll be a balance, just because it's on there doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to be able to issue all the citations that, just because they're on, on the books, because they have to balance the safety.
We do see high, high-speed chases on the news from time to time, how many kids do you think, or what is your experience with the number of kids that have flipped you the bird and taken off on their e-bike? Does that, does that, it seemed to me like that would happen all that often, but has it happened to you?
It's a small group, but they're the noisy ones, right? And they're the ones that you're seeing on social media because other folks see that and other posting on it, whether it be the Nextdoor app or, or one of these other local community face pages. But in reality, it is a small group, but they do get the most attention because it's, it's kind of a pain in the rear end, right? There seems to be a level of disrespect out there, and it's unfortunately that small group that is creating so much noise around this issue. But I, I know as well, just being out there in the streets, seeing plenty of people ride their e-bikes respectfully and following the, the traffic law, so.
If you stop this, if you stop based on an ordinance that might, might be approved, what are your thoughts on, what would you do, impound the bike if there's a violation? Or tell the offender to, here's your ticket, you know, ride home? What?
Yeah, it would simply be a citation, it looks like, if there is a citation under one of these new municipal codes, there'd be some sort of, uh, safety class that they would have to get completed through the city before, um, the, the ticket was finalized, something that would send to the court.
Are you aware?
But as far as impounding, there's, there's no vehicle code section that allows us to impound that bicycle unless it was evidence in a crime, this wouldn't be that case. Maybe you're referring to some of these electric motorcycles that we do take and impound? Those aren't bicycles, those are motorcycles, and those need to be registered on the street, and the ones we see around town more frequently or, or, or recently, they can't be registered, the DMV won't register those.
I have a quick question on the, the safety course, but it may be a question for Danielle rather than Captain Christian. Do we have, how many e-bike safety courses are available? What's their cost? And do you know anything about those courses? I'm not familiar with them.
You know, I know that we're having a rodeo coming up that the city sponsors. As far as education goes, I think our chair of the Public Safety Committee would have more information about that. I know that, I think San Juan, there's a gal that does quite a bit of education at the schools, but Nick, if he could come up, he would probably have more detailed information.
Nick, do you have details?
I'll just add one thing, if I may, regarding the rodeo Danielle mentioned. So last year, we did it, we did it at Vista Hermosa Sports Park, and it was over the weekend, it didn't get much traction. My guys are putting together one, they, they, I went to one today, and there was one last week at some of the local elementary schools. They're kind of doing it on a trial basis to see what it would look like, I think the first one they did was during school hours, uh, the one I went to today, which was down at Concordia, was after school, I think about twenty-five kids showed up. It wasn't necessarily e-bike focused, but more on overall bicycle safety, and there were some kids there with their e-bikes, so, um, it went well, I think some kids got some stuff out of it. I told the deputy, Deputy Gish in our CPS Ryan Case, this is going to get more traction if it's during school hours when you have the captive audience, during an assembly where they can't leave, because my opinion, the ones that show up after school today, those are the good kids, those are the kids that aren't creating these types of problems because they want to be involved with, with the bike safeties and, and, and all that, so, uh, I don't know if Nick has anything else to add regarding a rodeo, but.
Thank you for your work on public safety, did you have a, a comment, an answer to Councilman's question?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, I do not have a specific on the, the rodeo type thing that to be developed because e-bikes are fairly new and all that. The emphasis on how this proposal was put together is to say, um, law enforcement needs tools, right now they don't have the exact tools to deal with other than the vehicle code. This allows us, allows law enforcement to have another tool in their toolbox. As we know, they don't have to strictly enforce any of this stuff, you know, as far as, you know, citations, it's all discretionary, but if you don't have the tools, you can't do the citations if you need to.
Thank you, I'm, I'm going to move now to Chris to see if you had some questions.
One question, Danielle, there's the provision about off-road of, of class three that's in here. Now, I'm up in Talega, and there's already signs there that say no class three on the trails, so is this duplicative of an ordinance that's already on the books, or is that, do you know if that, why that's up there? I mean, you can see that it's a piece of tape that's over the sign that they added, you know, no class three on the trails.
I'm thinking that that must have been somebody from the community, because our current code doesn't regulate like, you know, hiking trails and such, it's just stuff that's down at the beach, the pier, the beach trail, and actually physically on the beach, so we don't have anything for those other areas of the city.
Okay. And then, yeah, I mean, just to, to express the, the concern, because I think we do need to do something, but I, I mean, I have kids that, that, that take a lot of pressure off my wife and I, by riding their e-bikes to their friends' houses, and we certainly don't want to, to take away that amenity that parents have, a little bit like, like Captain Christian is saying, so I do think there's a balance we can strike here, and I look forward to doing that, so I, I think I'm going to support this because I think we should, it's an important process, and I really appreciate the Public Safety Committee's work on this, but I think, I think we'll probably get some input that, that may change our, what, what ultimate resolution we get. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Rick.
Yeah, a, a couple of things, I know a city, Carlsbad, over a year ago initiated city ordinances that are very, very similar to this, and they, they've been. and they've been extremely effective in cutting down their accidents. And so I know it can work. As far as the enforcement goes, as Nick said, you know, yeah, it's a tool. But I think more importantly, we're talking about education at the point of sale here, which is really, really important. And if you just say, be safe on there and let them go, that's one thing. If you say, by the way, if you do this, 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 it's against the law. I think it's going to have an effect on the parents that are buying that e-bike and most of the kids too. I mean, it's going to be voluntary compliance. Say, no, I can't do wheelies down the sidewalk. Okay, most kids are not going to do that. They're going to know it's illegal. And as far as the sidewalk thing goes, there's nothing that here prohibits bikes on a sidewalk, just as you can't do wheelies, stoppies, or these other things that you shouldn't be doing on the sidewalk anyway. So I don't see that as being constrictive. The sixth, well, I'll go first. Also, I'd like to see added to this though, on the passenger side of it, no matter what age we decide or whatever, is that you can only take passengers if the e-bike is equipped for passengers. Because I see three people on an e-bike all the time, just, you know, I see three, four people. I see multi-people on e-bikes.
In most instances, it's not equipped. It's a towel over that back rack.
I know, and there are a lot of e-bikes that are equipped with a seat for the passenger and foot pegs. And those you should be riding, or a baby thing, you know, sitting on the back. But that should be the only time you take a passenger is if the bike is equipped to carry passengers. As far as the age thing goes, that is a quandary. Because like Mark said, you've got kids that are on borderline after dark. I think 18 might be a little too old, you know, 16 or I think you can get a permit now 15. I think taking the license thing out of there might be okay, you know? The only time, and the only time this would come into effect is if a kid's doing a something, you know, at any time, you know, after dark. It's illegal, they might get stopped for that, just for the illegal activity. And it might be found out that they're under some age or whatever, and you could, you know, you could put that on the ticket too. Because Captain Christian said, yeah, you don't just stop and make arbitrary checks for age. And man, it's hard to tell some kids whether they're 12 or 19, you know? So it's mostly the activity that they're doing. I think with the minor change of adding that carrying passengers only when the bikes are equipped for passengers would be good. And then maybe we, yeah, after dark in the summer, it's eight, you know? I think we should come up with some age. Right now, you can be six years old, driving 25 miles an hour down a sidewalk, and it's like, have a good time, you know? And I think we should probably, when it's after dark, when there's more chances of, even if you have lights, there's more chance of having accidents, I think maybe we should come up with some age, not necessarily tied to a driver's license.
All right, well, we've given you our thoughts, and I would only add two things. One is, I know that both the state and the county are proposing their own e-bike regulations. So I think we should monitor those closely to see how our regulations fit within theirs. And also to see whether or not we should weigh in on, at some point, on the state and the county proposals. Because maybe we can have some way of tying what we do in here in our city into what they're doing if they're going to try and do something that we think is completely unacceptable. If we look at the number of complaints from residents and from businesses in certain areas, in my view, I think we need to start somewhere, and this is the beginning of the process. And, you know, it's not a final solution, but I think we need to start. And so I'm going to support this effort to begin and send it back to all the experts that can advise us and give us their best recommendations about what to put in and what not to put in an ordinance. And we'll fully vet it and consider it at the time it's before us next.
I'll only add one more thing to this. And I know there is that group of kids that are those bad apples, but there's also a lot of good kids out there who are getting injured because, you know, riding three to four people on a bike or doing these other things. And this not only helps in enforcement of that, but it also gives parents some of the tools that they need to train their kids to say, you know, not to say, hey, don't do this, but if you do this, there will be consequences. And it helps, I think, our whole families, our whole community with that process. So I'm very excited to see what comes before us next.
Yeah, and just to repeat once again, one of the issues I think is probably most important is education. Because if we can have a program that educates these people when they're about to get on bikes, before they even start riding them, when they're purchasing them, I think you said when they're purchasing them. But even along the way at high schools and in elementary schools and middle schools, going in and educating them and putting those resources so they know what they shouldn't, shouldn't be doing and what's illegal. And maybe it will be illegal at that time, but all that is important to me anyhow. So does someone want to make a motion?
I'll move we adopt Resolution 24-68.
I will second though. Wait, did you hit the motion?
I got it for you.
Okay, I'll second.
The items that we've discussed?
And all that did that they incorporate what was discussed into the draft ordinance.
Absolutely.
Is that clear, City Clerk?
Yes.
And, well, on the friendly amendment, I guess we would have to vote on, but is there any opposition to that? Is everybody in agreement on that friendly amendment? Is that good enough, City Attorney?
Yes, we.
We had a first and second, so, and it's unanimous. Everybody accepts that. So let's take a vote then on the item 9B.
That was a, the vote carried 5-0 to adopt Resolution Number 2468, including the council member references to bikes must be equipped to carry passengers if you are having passengers and determine an age for after-dark riding of bikes. Next item on the agenda is 9C, Contract Award, Phase 1 of Reestablishing a Sand Compatibility and Opportunistic Use Program. Scoop and Lesleya Meyerhoff is here to present.
Thank you, Lesleya.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. It's my pleasure to be here tonight with you to introduce this project, which is the SCOOP project. So starting off with a definition, next slide, please. SCOOP stands for Sand Compatibility and Opportunistic Use Program. And SCOOP is an important coastal resiliency strategy. It's what I like to call a tool in the toolbox. It differs from the Army Corps project, for example, because that project is a planned project with a known borrow site and something that's in the works for many years with its project permits and environmental studies that are required for that. So SCOOP is more opportunistic in nature in that it looks at sediments that become available, for example, from the Santa Ana River, also the Prado Dam. It could also include sediments that are determined to be beach compatible that are from a, let's say, an upland development project where they're excavating for a basement and have 20,000 or 30,000 cubic yards of material that's available. They would otherwise say landfill or sell for concrete suppliers, but we would be able to obtain that if it's determined to be compatible and use it for beach nourishment in the city of San Clemente. So it's sort of an important companion program to have in place when these opportunistically available sources become available. Next slide, please. So the city has previously had a SCOOP program in place, fully functioning from about 2000 to about 2016. During that timeframe, the city implemented two SCOOP projects, and both of those were at North Beach. The first project was implemented in, I believe it's 2005, 2006 timeframe, and approximately 5,000 cubic yards of material was placed on North Beach. That was the very first project, pretty small in nature, but that's typical of SCOOP programs where you want to see how it works. You want to run through the logistics. You want to basically conduct a demonstration project to see if there's value in pursuing additional projects. So in 2016, the city was able to acquire a second source of opportunistically available beach-quality sediments, again from the Santa Ana River. And in 2016, the city placed about 12,000 cubic yards of sand, again at North Beach. Since those projects were completed, the city's permits did unfortunately expire. And that's why we're here tonight, to talk about restarting the SCOOP program. So the program's been inactive for about eight years. And next slide, please. The original SCOOP sites were located in four places in the city, starting at North Beach. There was a project site at Linda Lane. There was also two project sites near T Street, one from the pier just south, and then one south of that location. So these are, these will basically be up for reconsideration as we move forward with the new SCOOP program. Next slide, please. So in February of this year, you, council, provided direction to me to restart the SCOOP program. So we issued a request for proposals, RFP, in March of this year. The city received a proposal from Coastal Frontiers Corporation teamed with Moffett and Nickel and Merkel and Associates. The city reviewed the proposals and proposal and decided to move forward in selecting that consultant and preparing a professional services agreement to re-initiate SCOOP program in San Clemente. The first step will be to define the SCOOP program. So what beaches do we want to place sand on? How much sand do we want to place? What are the footprints? What are the volumes? That will all be determined in the very first phase of SCOOP. Following on that, we will have environmental review and environmental studies conducted to evaluate the potential environmental impacts of placing the sand on the beaches. Then the third step would be to conduct the permitting tasks. So permits would need to be obtained from the Army Corps of Engineers, the California Coastal Commission, the California State Lands Commission potentially, and then also the Regional Water Quality Control Board. As we move forward with SCOOP, pending your approval tonight, we would consider expanding the SCOOP program. So as I mentioned, there were four project sites previously in the program. We would look for opportunities to enhance the city's SCOOP program. We would also look for opportunities and constraints in terms of trucking, access to the beach, rail considerations. We'd also want to avoid any areas that have sensitive resources or well-known surf spots that we would not want to affect. So it is staff's recommendation to adopt Resolution 24-69 to award the contract to Coastal Frontiers Corporation for Phase 1. And that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
If we have questions probably, but let's hear public comments.
Okay, first up, Susie Whitelaw, followed by Amanda Q.
Hi, I'm very happy to hear that the SCOOP program is being re-initiated. Reading the scope of work for the consultant, I'm a little bit concerned. I thought the whole of the SCOOP program was going to be expanded to include all of the city beaches. And it turns out the very first task the consultant's being given is to rank the beaches and then select them. And I just don't think that that's right. All of our beaches are deserving of sand. I don't think we need to X-out and eliminate beaches, that this beach can't get sand. We don't like it. It's not as important as any other beach. I don't think that's what the people signed on for when we said that you should do this. I think it was, we wanted all the beaches, you know? I can't, I can't think of a reason why any beach should not be eligible to get sand. With any given project, it might be better for this area, this area needs it more right now. But just right off the bat, to totally eliminate some beaches and select only some beaches for further work? It's a lot of work. We're talking $800,000? That's a lot of taxpayer money, and I think that all the beaches need to be considered for this. On the good news side, I heard from Chandler Quarries, a meeting with them on Thursday. They have a proposal to deliver sand to our beaches for $42 a yard, delivered to the beach. We're meeting on Thursday to look at Calafia Beach Park to see how we might be able to get trucks through there and onto the beach. And just as reference, what the federal project, I mean, it started at $60 a cubic yard. I don't know what it ended up with, the new borrow site. And OCTA is looking at spending $250 a cubic yard for sand? And so once again, we need to get our hands on that mitigation money and get the city to do that money because we can find cheaper sources of sand and do a much better job and take care of all the beaches in our city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amanda Q, followed by Mike K.
Make this quick. I'm in support of Phase 1 in re-establishing a sand compatibility and opportunistic use program. One significant concern or problem in the past with sand replenishment at North Beach, it happened during the winter months and it was washed away. And I think that that's something that the experts need to keep in mind. So another thing that was mentioned before in public comments regarding having an expert or a panel of technical experts, we do have the Coastal Advisory Committee, and we also have Lesleya to work with that as well regarding the OCTA. I know that was addressed in public comments. And I just wanted to say I really welcome this, and I hope that the experts will look. As far as getting, I think they do have to look to see where the sand is needed and what, where it's more beneficial. And I think that you have to look at all the facts and really take in consideration what they're going to say and what to determine. They are the experts. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
And the final speaker is Mike K.
I was, I live in the south side of town, in the Cotton Cypress Shores area. And I have not heard my part of town mentioned very often, ever, in meetings. A woman was up a couple of months ago, and she made a comment about Poche Beach and how she felt that Poche Beach didn't get mentioned. And I sit back there and I thought, you know, it's true. T Street, Linda Lane, and Pier Bowl get the lion's share for obvious reasons. But it's important to remember that all of our beaches need sand. There is a justification for the need of sand everywhere. Where I am, it is an important grunion run. Who knew? It is. Grunion are in complete collapse in our area. Look into grunion. Our area, the south side of town, is one of the main grunion run areas. There's no more beach now. I could make the argument, hey, on environmental reason, we should be the top place for sand, saving our environment. There's many ways to look at it. There's many ways. We all want sand. Obviously, there's going to be politics involved in all this. There's going to be manipulation. There's going to be people that feel and justify one way or another, et cetera, et cetera. But when I saw that slide there for the SCOOP thing, I just ran and got a card. Like, no, no, no. SCOOP's got to include all the beaches, all the beaches, from Poche all the way down to the border with Trussells. All need to be on the SCOOP permits. If we're going to spend all this money, it's got to include everybody. If I went to the HOA guys where I live and said, yeah, yeah, you know, we're off, we're going to spend all this money, but we're excluded, that's not going to play over very well. That's not fair. It's not in the spirit of everything. So anyway, with the SCOOP thing, dramas in the details, and I hope that includes everybody. It's inclusive. One other thing I want to throw out real quick. I had a long conversation with the sort of SCOOP lady of Oceanside, if you want. She works with Sandegg. I'm blanking on her name right now, but she was up here during one of the presentations a couple of months ago. And I asked her all about SCOOP. How does it work down there? How does it work? She says, well, it's usually very small amounts, et cetera, et cetera. But a beneficial idea would have a site for storing SCOOP sand. So in the details and everything and the reports, I would hope that it included an offsite, and I hope the city would find a few acres for an offsite storing of incremental bits so that when we do get enough, we can put it in, it's the right time of year, et cetera, et cetera. Or when the freeway gets widened, or, you know, these things are going to happen in the future, that we have a space for it. the future, that we have a space for it. And I hope it includes everybody. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right. We don't have anybody right now, but Leslie, you want to come back up and we'll have you address a couple of questions we're asking and answering. I think we do have an off-site site, but.
Is your mic on?
Yeah, there it is. That's better. Could you address the issues? And it will take a little bit of explanation, because the SCOOP permit is maybe limited to one area, but we have multifaceted approach to the entire of San Clemente Beach, from the OCTA to the Army Corps of Engineers. Explain how that all ties together, and particularly this project, how this will fill in the gaps of some communities.
Yes. So, we've heard a lot from the community over the past year about the importance of nourishing all the beaches, whether it be Army Corps dredge sand, or whether it be OCTA sand, or whether it be SCOOP sand, or some other opportunity like the Sand Egg project, for example. So, there's a lot of sand projects in the works, as you're all well aware. And I think it is important to keep all the beaches on the table. And I, if I said we were excluding any, that's not, I misspoke. It's not what we're planning to do. We are planning to look at all beaches in the city. And one of the reasons we do the shoreline monitoring twice a year is to find out where the sand is needed. Where are the beaches that are most critically eroded? Where are the erosion hotspots? Where is the sand sticking around? Where is it not sticking around? And so, that data that we're collecting is going to be very important for defining where we place sand, which beaches get prioritized. So.
And that's what I heard. I heard you prioritizing, not eliminating all the beaches.
The previous SCOOP program had four discrete beaches, and as a first task, we're going to look at expanding that to all the beaches. So, just wanted to clarify on that. The comment about not placing in winter, you know, that's a valid comment. We know winter storm waves are stronger. They do tend to take the sand offshore into sandbars, and it's brought back onshore in the summertime. So, with the opportunistically available sediment, if we do have a stockpile site and we can retain it somewhere and then place it maybe when the waves are calmer, that's going to be a great option. So, something to consider. We did have a stockpile site in the previous SCOOP program, so we'd be looking to doing that again.
Where was the site previously?
The site was, I believe it was right at the intersection of El Camino Real and Avenida Pico. So, very close to the beach.
I think it was at our yard, right?
The wastewater facility. Yeah. So, we can reevaluate that and see if that makes sense to utilize again for stockpiling, until it's more optimal for placement. One of the key considerations for placing sand is getting the trucks onto the beach, if it's going to be a truck delivery operation. So, we are, you know, we are looking at the low-hanging fruit with respect to what are the easiest beaches to get a truck onto. So, for instance, North Beach, the trucks can just back right up to the beach, dump the sand, and then we can have heavy equipment to spread it. Same thing with the city's main beach. So, if there is not vehicular access, we would need to look at rail access to a beach, or possibly just getting it further down to the beach, to the southern end of the city. And all of that can be worked through as we move forward with the SCOOP program. I think, I want to emphasize that all options are on the table. We know that all beaches in the city are in need of sand, so we don't want to exclude any beaches whatsoever.
Andy, if I could ask you a question on this, because I think it's important for you who have, I guess I could talk about it, but I'd rather have you talk about it, in terms of what we've been doing with OCTA, the meetings, the testimony last week. I mean, we spent the day with several principals from all the major organizations. A week before, I think I met with the OCTA for three hours. And then, we've had them on our beaches, walking up and down from Cypress Shores all the way to North Beach, both the OCTA and the Army Corps and the Coastal Commission. But we have been negotiating with them on all this, particularly OCTA, to place sand on different areas. Maybe you can fill in a little bit, some of the other areas.
Yeah, you bet. I appreciate that, Mayor. I was going to take some time, a little later on the agenda, on my, where the city manager has an opportunity to make some comments to talk about this. But there's been a lot of collaboration lately on trying to get sand on our beach, and there's some really exciting things happening right now. As you mentioned, we were able to go to Sacramento and have some really in-depth meetings. Most of the meetings that occur, of course, occur in the hallway, not during the, not during the actual hearing. And we were able to have some one-on-one conversations with OCTA. I believe that they are committed to helping us be a partner in putting sand on our beach. I don't think they are an antagonist at all. I think that they are committed to doing that, and they have been very helpful at the highest level. The executive director is who we were talking to, and they've been very helpful. Beyond that, we also had some very good conversations with the executive director of the Coastal Commission. She recognizes that San Clemente is different. San Clemente has a revetment, basically, all along our entire coastline. So, there's very little natural replenishment of our beaches. Everything that happens here is going to have to be done by us. And by, when I say us, it's a collective group of the Coastal Commission, State Lands, OCTA, the city of San Clemente. You mentioned that we've also been having people come down and tour our beaches. We've had the Coastal Commission executive director come to San Clemente and spend a day with us. We've had the staff here several times, so.
Twice, actually.
Twice, yeah, exactly. So, there's been a lot of really good things happening in what that, and we haven't mentioned yet, Orange County Parks. They are a new partner now. They're talking about the possibility of putting as much as 25,000 cubic yards on our beaches as soon as June, if we can work that through. So, it has been laser-focused on trying to get sand on our beach. I think that we have a voice, and we're swinging above our weight class right now at the state level. We are having, the Senate want to talk to us. We have letters coming in from the Coastal Commission. We're a very small city, but people are listening to what's happening in San Clemente and using us as a model. We are on the Coastal Cities Group, one of six cities on the Coastal Cities Group for Cal Cities. So, we have a voice there. So, it's pretty exciting, and a lot of this, of course, is because of Leslie's efforts and the efforts of councils past and present. But it's a really exciting time right now, and there's a possibility that we can even work with OCTA to expand the project that we're doing this fall. When Manson comes back to finish our project this fall, we may be able to expand that project and put some of that sand mitigation on our beaches as early as this fall. So, all those things are coming together. We're really excited about it. I don't want to be Pollyanna and rose-colored glasses, but we are making more progress than we were making for a long time. Pretty excited about it.
And I would only add that, you know, each of those, they're not separate projects, but, and you, both of you have been instrumental and vital to this. You let me tag along once in a while. But they do provide an opportunity to put sand at different areas along our beach, from North Beach all the way down to Cypress Shores. And we're filling in little pieces as it goes with each of those projects. So, even though the Ace project is a particular area, the other projects are also in play. And is there something that you wanted to add to that also?
I would just add that our coastal engineers have indicated that we need about 7 million cubic yards of sand to restore our beaches back to, you know, 200 to 250 feet wide. So, we are working to bring that amount of sand back to the city over time.
All right. I appreciate it. Is there a motion or?
Actually, could I?
I have a couple of questions.
I will go down the list normally, but.
Oh. Do you want, what do you mean, go down the list?
Oh, that, when you press a button.
Oh, I see. Request to speak.
Request to speak.
Oh, I'm sorry. There was a request to speak.
We're just, we're learning this.
Who are you calling on?
But I don't know who was first now anymore, but.
Well, just go ahead.
Steve, go ahead.
I have a few questions. I'm concerned about the contract. This contract, and I know we all need the SCOOP permit. We need it quickly. There was one company that bid on this contract, this proposal, just one company, and they do, I understand, SCOOP permits up and down the coast, so they're very experienced at this. My concern is the three-phase timeframe and the cost. The first timeframe, it was extended over about six weeks. And if we're not identifying specific beaches and quantifying and doing analysis, we're just saying, our five miles of beach needs, our five miles of beach needs replenishment, and let's expand it. I think your presentation said, we want to consider expanding it. As the speaker said, I'm 1,000% behind that. We definitely need the permit for the entire, our entire beach. It seems to me that the first phase could be done much quicker, almost immediately. We have six weeks dedicated and, what, $170,000 to this identification. To me, that seems excessive. The second phase, the second phase is also, it seems to me, almost cookie-cutter for a company that does this on a regular basis. And we have a $700,000 fee for paperwork. I know the Sequo work is different. That's unique. But not all that unique. It just seems to me that we could shorten this timeframe dramatically in Phase One especially. And this is an 18-month project. Our agreement says we have a six-month term to the contract, which means six months from now, we're going to be having no contract with a year to go. That needs to be kind of addressed somehow. Maybe the city attorney can work on that. But it just seems to me that this timeframe can be accelerated. That's just a concern that I have. I'd like your thoughts on that. But my last concern deals with the question, really, Leslie, that I hope you can answer, and that is, when the railroad did an emergency dump of the riprap, and then they came back later, you know, it's easier to ask for forgiveness than for permission. And they came back later. Is it possible for us to use, to receive that additional sand and place it before our SCOOP permit is finalized? Is that possible? And if so, what are the sanctions or problems with doing that?
Yes. To address your second question first, the project that Andy mentioned with, we're working on in conjunction with Orange County, that project will likely be processed as a CDP waiver, which is almost like an emergency. It's a slightly different process, but it will be expedited. And that project, we're hoping to have on the June Coastal Commission agenda, so next month, because the sediment is becoming available mid-June. So, if we had to run the full permit timeline, six months to a year to get a regular CDP, we would miss this opportunity. So, we're working with coastal staff to make sure that they meet that timeline, and we're working very aggressively to run all the other steps, the sediment testing for the source, and conduct the other studies in order to get the sand in time.
Would there be sanctions imposed with the emergency?
No, there wouldn't be, because we're not getting an emergency permit. So, sometimes, sometimes people.
But is there a sanction applied to that?
There would not be, not for us. No, because we are actually running through their permit process with them utilizing the foundation of the city's original SCOOP program.
One last question, and I would like your thoughts on the timing.
Yes.
This contract for $700,000 from a company that does this day in and day out, they put a bid in of 700. Is there any negotiation with the company to say, you know, your three phases total, what, 700,000? And, you know, we've got a budget of X amount, 700, minus, you know, a big number, hopefully. Is that something that's negotiable in any way?
So, the proposal before the council tonight is just the contract for Phase One. The idea being placed forward is that the other phases would be bid out again.
Separately, not, so they're not included in?
No, it's just Phase One.
Just Phase One.
So, Phase One is this first step to define the program, the beaches, the volume, the data gaps, if any, in terms of technical studies that are needed in order to make sure we're placing sand in an, you know, environmentally responsible manner, in the right locations that's not going to cause any adverse impacts to habitat, surf resources, or water quality.
By incorporating the permit to the entire city, does that speed up the process, or do you still have to say, this is going to North Beach or to Cypress Shores area?
We would still need to define specific polygons or areas where sand could be placed, and then come up with cross-sections, heights, volumes, length, width, all of those kinds of parameters. Mind you, we're not starting from scratch. We do have a solid program that we're working from to reactivate it. So, there's a lot of efficiencies, I think, to be gained. And one other thing that I'm not sure the consultants are aware of is the abundance of data that we have from the Army Corps project, both the pre-construction monitoring surveys and the post-construction monitoring data that we'll have as well, which we will make available to them. So, the price that they quoted the city is not to exceed limit, and we'll make all efforts to make sure that they, you know, stay below that budget.
Okay. The first phase is estimated to be six months. It seems to me it could be much, much shorter. Phase, you're going to come back with Phase Three and Four, or Two, Three?
Phase Two and Three. And Phase Two is the environmental, and then Phase Three is the permitting. So, those can be basically run concurrently. So, as soon as we have defined the project, the SCOOP project, then.
Could it be?
Could be.
Could it be expedited if we define the project as all of our beaches?
It probably could be, yes. Yes.
Okay. I guess my feeling is, we need to expedite that somehow. And rather than going through an 18-month process, it seems to me we could just move a whole lot quicker. I'm just kind of troubled by the time and the cost for something that a company does this. They're the only one that do it. They know what they're doing. They're not reinventing the wheel. They're not drafting brand-new documents. They're using one from every permit they've ever filed. And I'm just a little concerned with the customer.
And we have so much information already.
Exactly.
We do. We do have a lot of information.
Okay. Rick?
Thank you.
Well, let me, did you have a response or a comment?
Just that we can consolidate the environmental and permitting tasks into a single phase, and that could save some time, if both of those tasks are started concurrently with one another. So, that's definitely an option going forward. At the end of the six months, we'll have recommendations from the consultants about the next steps. And so, we can look at ways to save money and save time.
Yeah. I guess, again, that's what troubles me, is that we have to wait six months to do that to begin to get into Step Two and Three.
Yeah.
I just wish we could move faster.
The one wildcard I would just point out is, once we submit the permit applications, how long the regulators take to respond to the permits, to take them before their boards and commissions for approval, that is not necessarily fully in our control. We have some ability to maintain contact, and we do have good working relationships with all those agencies. So, we'll work to make sure the permits are processed expeditiously. So, that'll be an important thing for us to do going forward.
Rick?
I'll circle my question here briefly, and this is kind of addressing, a couple of the speakers talked about management of sand. And I got educated today by a former council member. She and I talked for a while, because I couldn't quite remember the North Beach issue, when we scooped the sand, and three months later, it was gone. And she reminded me, she was on the council at the time, that the idea was, they brought the sand in, and they actually was all burm'd up by the parking lot. And because of the time of the year, they weren't planning on flattening it out right away on the beach. That was going to be something that they figured on the, you know, the tides and when the storm season was over. But it became known as like North Beach dunes, and all the families went down there, and they were using, you know, climbing it and sliding down it, and it moved back. And they actually tried to push it back as a burm again. And then, the same thing happened, so they just, city just said, you know, it's actually, it's dangerous for all these people doing it. We're going to spread it out. Spread it out, middle of storm season, storms came in and moved it all out. So, my question is, is part of the component going to be management? Because we get this sand, we know it's so valuable. Whatever we get, we need to make sure we do everything we can to manage to keep it. And I know we push sand around twice a year now. That's the schedule. And I don't think that's going to be adequate when we start getting this sand. We're going to have to start moving it back or storing it, or do whatever, to put it at the most optimum time actually on the beach for usage, and not just spread it down in the winter and let the storm take it away. So, I'm hoping that management is going to be a big component of this, not just an afterthought.
Yes. Management recommendations will be embedded in the SCOOP plan. And that's where you sort of get into the details of where does the sand go? How high do you place it? Do you create a winter storm burm? Does it go on the back of the beach? Does it go into the water, into the surf zone, because it's not color-compatible or, you know, other characteristics? So, all of those recommendations are forthcoming within a plan like this.
Thank you.
Mark? Yes. So, my one concern here is, and I think this will be great, fantastic, let's just start with that, but our previous SCOOP permit, we had for 16 years. And within that 16 years, we. And within that 16 years, we only received 17,000 cubic yards of sand. That's correct?
That's correct.
What's to say that we'll go through this whole process and we'll go through another 16 years and only get 17,000 cubic? Why will this time be different?
That's a very good question and a valid question. And one thing I want to point out is that previously, when the city had the scoop permits, they had a five-year lifespan. So every five years, they expired. The city would need to start at about year four to amend the permits to make them valid for another five years. So one thing we will be doing in this program, we'll be asking for longer permit lifetimes. So for example, a 10-year minimum, maybe a 20-year minimum, maybe even a 50-year minimum. So we're going to extend the permit life, which will save the city time and money going forward because we won't have to keep continually renewing the permits almost as soon as we get them. With respect to the sediment sources and why the city didn't put more sand on the beach previously, I wasn't here, so I don't know exactly why. But part of what you need to do with scoop is outreach to the community about people, to people who might have sediment available from a construction site, from a quarry, from various other sources. And we need to identify those sources upfront and then actively pursue them. For example, we know the Santa Ana River has anywhere from, you know, 20,000 to 50,000 to 60,000 cubic yards of sand each year available that's beach-quality compatible in a wet year. And so we can tee ourselves up to get that sand every year. So let's say we can have a recurring project at North Beach or Apochi or wherever the city desires to put it. Every year, we can count on 25,000 cubic yards. So we're going to build those kinds of things into the program. So even though it's still opportunistic in nature, we know what's coming in the pipeline and we're actively going to get that sand. And with the funding mechanisms that we will hopefully have in place, we'll be able to pay the trucking costs. We'll be able to pay for the heavy equipment to move the sand once it's delivered to the beach and to conduct the monitoring pre and post-construction. So there's a bigger framework that we will be developing with this scoop program to make it a more successful project that can actually be implemented and bring sand to the city on a regular basis.
Sounds fantastic. Another question I have, I know Huntington Beach, a few other cities have these scoop permits and they're bringing in thousands of cubic yards every year. Will we be in competition with them? Is there a limited amount that we get? And, you know, do they have first access to it? And because we're coming in late, we're having third, fourth dibs on it?
There will be some competition. For example, the Santa Ana River sand. In talking with staff at OC Public Works, they've got about 60,000 cubic yards available in mid-June. We know Huntington Beach is going to get about 5,000 cubic yards. We know that Orange County Parks is going to be looking for about 25,000 at Capo Beach, kind of doing a smaller version of what they did last year. And then we will get the balance that's available. So I'm estimating 25,000 to 30,000 cubic yards right now. So, but yes, there is some competition for these sources. But that's, I guess, really the underscoring, the importance of having all the permits ready to go, all the environmental already completed. So all you need to do is make the phone call to get the sand delivered and then have the bulldozer just move it around.
Excellent. And then just pigging back on what Mr. Knoblock was asking, because you mentioned that we can get some 25,000 cubic yards coming up soon. But that seems sooner than how this is going to play out in terms of the three-years estimated timeframe.
That is correct. So this is because it just basically became available. We are going down a slightly different permit path in expediting this small one-time volume. So we're going to do a coastal development permit waiver. That's the path we're working on right now with coastal staff. And then they have a regional general permit under the Army Corps of Engineers, and we'll utilize that permit. So this will not be a programmatic level long-term. This will be a one-time scoop permit from coastal with the full understanding that we are in process of redeveloping our scoop program. And we'll be coming back with the full, you know, environmental documentation and all the technical studies. We need to justify a larger, more permanent program.
While that's going, you know, this is taking a year and a half to three years, if another opportunity comes up within this timeframe, is this a, we only get to use it one time? Or we'll be able to use that since they know that we are working on this process?
We would likely be able to, if we're repeating this project, again, let's say next June, June 2025, we would likely be able to utilize our CDP waiver process again. And we will have generated a lot of good information. And the information we're generating right now for this project, hopefully next month, will also be able to be used by the consultant team when they come onboard to help restart the program. So none of it will be wasted, I guess. That's what I want you to understand, is all of this data is valuable, the data we're generating now. It will be made available to the team so that they can use it and not have to reinvent the wheel.
Great. Chris?
Thank you, Leslia, thanks for your efforts again. Question is about cost. If I'm reading the staff report right, Phase One to Three is sort of preparatory, right? So these are getting the right permits and doing sort of preparatory reviews, those kind of things. Phase Four is the actual delivery of the sand, is that right? Okay. Is there any cost associated with Phase Four? It's not in the staff report. Or is the nature of a scoop permit that people give it to us for free and they truck it down here for free and they put it on the beach for free?
The Phase Four is really up to the city how that gets implemented. For example, the Santa Ana River sand that we will have access to next month is technically free. The city will need to pay for the trucking cost. So the cost to get it to the city and then the cost to spread it. So while there's no charge to the county for acquiring the sand, there is cost for the trucking.
Okay, okay. And, okay, so we don't have an estimate of what that cost would be, but-
We're working on an estimate right now based on what Orange County did last year at Capo Beach. We're using some of their same assumptions in terms of number of trucks, cubic yards per truck, volume, seasonality, things like that.
Okay. Is there grant money available to help us with the cost of the implementation?
There may be, there may be. We're looking into a couple of grants right now. You are probably aware that some grant agencies, like State Parks and Coastal, have had their grant funds frozen for the current fiscal year. We're not sure about the scenario starting July 1. So there's possibility we'll have more grant opportunities available. Right now, that's sort of an unknown. So we are looking at internal city funding sources to get the sand delivered.
Yeah. We have a lot of hands-out for the internal city funds. It's the thing that's tough for me, and it's obviously our top priority. Are there state funds available for these kind of projects?
To actually implement the projects? Opportunistic ones are challenging just because they just pop like popcorn, so to speak. So once they become available, you have to go get the sand right away. There isn't time to apply for a grant and wait for, you know, acknowledgement that you've received the grant. Grants can take a year or more to become available. So it's possible we could apply for some grants just to have the funding available in place in the city accounts so that we could obtain the sand in the future. So that's something we'll need to look at. And then there's also an opportunity to negotiate. If you've got a developer, let's say, building a project, doing an excavation for a basement, underground parking, et cetera, something like that, we can work with them to have them take care of some of the costs, like the sampling and analysis, the testing costs, the trucking cost, some of the pre-construction and post-construction monitoring that's required by the permits. So there's definitely some ways to offset the cost and reduce the cost to the city while still obtaining that beach-quality sand.
Or you could get an appropriation, right? Congressman Levin got us about, what is it, almost $10 million directly appropriated for a San Clemente project. Have we gotten any state appropriations of funding to do any projects on sand?
We had, State Parks was a major contributor to the city's Army Corps Cost Share Agreement. So they paid, I think, 85% of the city's 35% cost share. So absolutely, the state has been a good partner.
Have we gotten any state appropriations, though, in the state budget directly for San Clemente funding?
I do not have that answer.
Okay.
I'm not sure.
I don't think so, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
If I could follow up on Chris's comment about the sand. You said, "The sand is free, but we have to..." The Orange County Flood Control District has to get rid of that sand to keep the flood channels open. Wouldn't they contribute a little bit of money toward the cost of the transport? Have we negotiated? Have you asked them, "We'll take your sand if you help us pay for it"?
They will sell it. They can sell the sand to concrete manufacturers, cement manufacturers.
So we have competition in that area?
We do have competition. It's also used as construction fill for projects. So it's a valuable resource to them.
So if they're not willing to help pay for the transport?
One thing they are willing to do is to sort it and grade it and help load the trucks. But they're not willing to, I guess, pay for the trucking.
You know, I do, this is the topic that no one really wanted to talk about. And I don't want to put a blanket on things either. But keeping our beaches healthy and bringing sand to our beaches is not going to be a free endeavor, and it's going to cost a lot of money. It's going to have to be the highest priority of our city. And even at that rate, if we want to be able to bring all the sand that's available here, we're going to have to look at some new types of revenue sources. That's just the reality. It's millions of dollars to bring this kind of sand to your beach, but it is the very lifeblood of our community. So we've got to find ways to do that.
We're talking about $9 million a year?
We figured that, so for our next beach nourishment project, which is going to happen five or six years from now, we need to be saving probably on the neighborhood of $3 or $4 million per year that we don't have right now. And then to keep this, if we could keep this pace up and going, we're probably talking another $5 or $6 million a year. So it's probably in the neighborhood of about $10 million a year to keep these kinds of projects going all the time to get our beaches healthy again, which will take some time.
That'll be the projects all the way down?
All the, yeah, that's right, for the whole community, that's right, not just for-
One quick question. Mr. City Manager, on the grant area, is there a, Chris asked this question, and it's a good one. Do we have a, someone's focused on getting grants so that when we do have an opportunity, the money's already in the bank? Do we have, do you have staff that's working on that now currently or looking at where those grants might be?
We do. We have both a lobbying effort at the state level and at the federal level. And we have at least requests in for the state budget for about $10 million and the federal government for about $11 million. And so we're hoping that they will get funded. Who knows? I think the state budget is really, really tight this year. I think it's going to be difficult to get money from the state of California. I have higher hopes from the federal government. They have asked for more information. When the federal government asks you for more information, that's a positive sign. And so we're feeling pretty good about that.
One quick question regarding the money. The people that we have in Sacramento and Washington that we're paying to consult, that will be assisting in this effort, in your opinion, would it be better to use the funds that we're paying for the consultants to have staff under your control that can, on a day-to-day process, bird-dog these grants and go after them?
That's a really great question. If we're going to get really serious about this kind of funding that we're talking about, we're probably going to have to make our own self, our own priority. As you know, these lobbying firms have many, they represent a lot of cities. And so they have a lot of priorities. It's very likely that we may have to come to the council and say, "You know what, it's time to have our own person doing some of these lobbying efforts." No doubt about it.
I'd like to think a little bit more about that in the future, too. Thank you.
All right, do we have a motion on this?
One more quick question. You mentioned that we need to find some revenue sources for this. I'm assuming we'll be bringing this to the people to ask on a revenue source. Do you know if that will be coming up in this next election cycle or will be later?
That's a really good question. First, I want to go to your first comment, because that's true. It's the residents that decide this. The council and staff don't get to decide whether or not we're going to raise new revenues. If the city, if the residents of the community want to do that, we are engaging, as the council knows, they've directed staff to do some surveys to find out exactly what our residents think at the current time. So in the next several weeks, we will be conducting that. And we will be getting answers from our residents about whether or not they would like us to pursue additional revenue sources for our coastline. We will be bringing that back to the city council, I would imagine, probably within a month or so, so that you have some decisions, some information to make good decisions on.
Will there be enough time between now and November for getting something on the ballot? If that's the desire of the council?
If that's the outcome of the residents and the council, yes, there's still time.
There's plenty of time for that, yeah. Does someone want to make a motion on Item 9C?
I'll move to- I'll move to adopt the staff recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion? All right, let's vote then.
Thank you, Leslia.
Okay, that was a motion by Duncan, second by Mayor Protim Ann Meyer, carried 5-0 to adopt Resolution 24-69. And the next item on the agenda is review of city council agenda template with consideration of moving council member reports up in the agenda. So mayor and council, the item before you is a consideration of modifying your current agenda template to move to the beginning of the agenda, council member comments. You did this at your April 16 meeting, and it allowed the public an opportunity to hear council member comments rather than waiting till the end of the meeting to discuss your council member items. So this is just-
We don't have a staff report, but we have, Rick, you have-
We do not have public comments.
No public comments.
Yeah, I think usually this period of time usually takes like five minutes or less. We all do this at the end, and there's nobody here. I think it would be nice to have the opportunity to speak on some of these things when there's actually people there. I see Chris has got a really cool hat over there, and he's going to make some kind of presentation about the fire department. Not that the fire department needs any more talking about them, but the fact is, it would be nice if people were around to hear that presentation.
Not even Shane is here to hear that, even, right?
He's seen the hat.
He didn't get a presentation, so he left.
So I-
If he doesn't get one, he's out.
I think it-
I think it's a good idea.
Was that a motion?
Not yet. We're going to have a little bit more debate. Mark?
I don't mind moving it up a little bit. I think for me, though, I'm looking at the people who come to these meetings, and they're here to talk about the unfinished business, they're here to talk about all those other items. I don't know that they necessarily want to hear all that we have to say, and they're taking time out of their day to have the time to speak and hear about the issues that are important to them. I do see the importance of moving it up a little bit. I wouldn't be opposed to moving it up to like right at this point, right now, right before the consent calendar. So if those who want to, can stick around, usually it's a little bit more here than on a busier night that would stick around. But I, I don't know. For me, if I were in the audience, I would want it to come a little bit later.
Can I respond to that?
Again, I look out in the room, and the only person that's really going to hear this on a consistent basis is Streeter and Amanda. I mean, really, it's, I, this component takes five minutes or less. We go down and we just, it's the quickest thing we do. And I just think a lot of the, I've had people ask me what, when, you know, they'll hear that something was brought up, and they'll go, "When was that brought up?" Because they turned the meeting off, even the ones that are listening to it at home. If it was taken a half an hour, I'd say, "Sure, you're absolutely right." People, but for five minutes or so, they can just tune it out if they don't want to hear it.
I see no further comments, so I'm going to make the motion.
We do have one speaker card.
We do?
Amanda Q.
Since my name was mentioned, I was talking-
But we're already voting.
I can go back and sit down. I was just going to say that-
Go ahead.
I, you know, I think that it's important to have it at the end because during the course of city council, public comments and everything from the public, of course, that things come up and that it inspires our city council members to bring things up and talk about certain items at the end. So I think that's, you know, what I wanted to include, what I wanted to state, and thank you, that's all, thanks.
Is there a second on that?
Sure. I think there's a middle ground here. I, look, we have, the city attorney gives a report and staff communications. I think right around then would make the most sense, right before public hearings. It's not right at the beginning, but it's pretty close to the beginning still. It's not at the right at the beginning, but it's pretty close to the beginning still. So, I think that probably strikes the right balance. I was just looking at how we have it ordered here. We have, we have closed session report, so you're hearing from the city attorney, staff communications, so you're hearing from staff, city manager, maybe. And then, I think it makes sense for us to give our report and just to make, because we already did, that we're just letting the community know we did, right? And, and now we're associated with different commissions, so maybe what happened on that commission. That's where I would put it, right on our agenda, where it is now, like, after six and before seven, after staff communications before public.
You want to make that a motion?
Uh, sure.
All right. I'll actually second that. So, uh.
I, I, I would like to make a substitute motion.
Okay.
And my substitute motion is the, that we, we place these comments at the beginning of the meeting. Our, our agenda is already bifurcated pretty substantially, and this, this item doesn't take a lot of time. It does let the community know the activities that we're involved in in the community. I think that's important. We're talking a few minutes. It's, I've never seen a council comment go more than a few minutes, so I, I just think the, the recommendation is, is a good one, and I would support it at the very beginning of the meeting.
If that's a substitute motion, I'll second it.
Okay, now, we, we have the, but we should be voting on that one first.
We have a substitute motion that we're going to vote on. That's correct.
We need to go back.
And that was a motion by council member Noblock. Who was the second? Councilman Loughler.
You got Noblock.
Mr. Mayor, if I can just ask, council member Noblock said at the very beginning of the meeting, could you please clarify where you would like it exactly on the agenda?
Um, well, we have the special presentations, I think, right after that and right before oral communications. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. And, um, commit, uh, council member Loughler, is that your second?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, you can go, you can vote on the, on the second.
Yeah, we'll vote on the second first. Right before oral communications. All right. Can we take a voice vote on that or, or can we go down?
It's up there.
Oh, it's up? Okay.
Carrie's 3-2, so we will move council member comments after special presentations on the agenda.
All right. Next item?
Item on the agenda is consent calendar.
All right.
No public comments.
All right, let's move to a vote then on, unless there's discussion.
Anything to pull?
Uh, no, here, no discussion. Let's, someone want to move the consent item, consent calendar?
On our screen, we still have the.
Still got the voting on the first.
You, you should be able to make a motion. I've, I've selected it, it just, there's just a bit of a delay.
Go to, yeah, go to consent calendar, and you can make a motion.
There it is.
Who's making it?
I'll make a mo, a motion to move the items.
All right, second.
On the consent calendar.
On the consent calendar.
Second.
First and second, let's vote on that. All right.
We're missing one vote.
Are we missing one vote?
Did I miss a vote?
There we go. Carrie's 5-0 to move the consent.
All right. Next item?
Next item on the agenda is oral communications part two, and we have no speakers on that. So, moving on to future agenda items.
Any future agenda items? Hearing none, next item?
I, I have one, I have one question regarding future items. There was some discussion about the, our parks commission made a recommendation on dog, on, on a pilot program for the dog beach. I haven't heard anything on that for quite a while. Is that planned on being agendized by staff anytime soon or not? I just am curious what the status is.
Councilman, I will give, I will send each of you an email tomorrow updating you on that. I don't see Samantha here, but I'll get you an update file.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Commissioning committee reports?
Oh, yeah, just one. Actually, so, that will go on, no, no, this, this is a, so, on the, the cost of the, the animal shelter, we are, we're, we are in the process of getting our employees into Calpers. That's going along really well. That's, that's all from there.
Is my, do I, is my request to speak, I don't know. Yeah, you're, you're, you're on there. It's your turn. Beaches Park and Rec Commission moved a number of things, but the, maybe the, the one of note is the, that the lifeguard foundation has plans to put a lifeguard statue. City manager and I went and took a look at the location the other day, down at Park Del Mar, right down by the pier bowl. There's probably some minor modifications that can be made, but I think it's a pretty cool idea. This is a, we have a long tradition of lifeguards and watermen, frankly, in, in San Clemente, and it would be a nice feature down at that Park Del Mar area for kids and families to take pictures with, and it would, it would be kind of a fun thing. So, that'll be coming to us at some point, just to note that they, they did move that forward out of the commission with an, an approval to support that lifeguard statue.
I, I just, a couple of things, and I'll, I'll mention. One of them, at the, the Songs Engagement Panel, we had a meeting this past week, still focused on safe storage, safe transportation, safe interim storage site, a, a safe permanent storage site. Two tests coming up in the next month. One is a shaker test, it's, it's going to be done to test the capacity of the storage units to withstand an earthquake, and the other is a safe rail car that's going to test the ability to move this nuclear fuel if, if we ever get a location to move it to. That's the report on that committee.
Mayor, I, I forgot one other thing. I guess this falls under here because I'm not going to do councilman comments, but Orange County Fire Authority did have a, the Fire Ops 101, which I wish Shane was here to hear about, but that was where you, you know, elected officials can go. You get suited up in the, the turnouts and the whole gear and the face mask and everything, and you, they have you rappelled down a buil, building. We cut, I cut open the car, along with like congressman and other city council members with the jaws of life, and what else did we do? There's a confidence course where you have to crawl through this dark simulation of a burning house, and if you don't get out, like, they throw you off the, the fire authority board, I think. So, it's, uh, it was pretty intense. It, it gives you a real appreciation for firefighters when, when they do have those fire incidents, which are actually relatively rare. Most of their stuff is medical related, but when they do have those fire incidents, very high likelihood of injury or death. So, a lot of, a lot of respect for them going through that. It is something that's open to all elected officials, so we'll, we'll get the word out for the next one, so that anybody on here who wants to go through all of that, you get, you get a helmet with your name on it and everything, if nothing else. I think that's pretty cool.
They make you grow a mustache, Wes.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I failed at that, so, you know. But yeah, so, pretty cool thing that the Fire Authority does.
My niece starts her fire academy with Los Angeles Fire Department next week, so we're.
Awesome. They need, they need more women, so that's awesome.
She's tough.
Any other subcommittee updates? Council member reports?
Yeah, Chris and I went to the Cal Cities Convention up in Sacramento a couple of weeks ago. It was really productive. We got to advocate for sand replenishment, got to talk to several congress or, or senate representatives and assembly members, also talking about the regulation of sober living homes, very productive. They were really keen to hear what we had to say on that. Also had several conferences there. If you're interested, you can ask me about them. One was on, Stalana County had an interesting approach to homelessness. There was also a, a meeting on creating more social connection within your cities, and I think our city is doing a really good, good job on having that social connection between youth and elderly and, and everyone in between. I think we're, we're really hitting the mark on that. But if you're interested to hear more about what we learned out there, I'd be happy to, to share more with you.
All right, Rick?
Cinco de Mayo on Saturday at the Maxburg Park, even though the weather was not very good, the turnout was great and great community support, lots of good entertainment, and fun had by, by all.
I was there, too. That was fun.
Yeah, yeah. Just quick, quick thing, Cinco de Mayo was great this past Saturday. I had the opportunity to speak to a group of 100 German women that are here in, in this country that, on an au pair kind of program, and they come to San Clemente every year. I think you might have spoken to them last year, Chris, and it's wonderful. They're doing a wonderful job, and so that was good. We had the state of the, the city this past Friday. I think it was the largest crowd ever. That's, that's a joke, by the way.
Nice. I got it.
We had, we had earlier this week, had a Marine Corps dinner that Steve and I attended, representing the state, welcomed the Marines. This past week, I had an all-day training session for the Conference of Mayor, Mayors here in San Clemente on how to be an effective mayor. The OCTA briefing last week with the OCTA, spent half-day with them, going over their issues for, for this year. We had the opportunity, I think most of us went, or some, a few of us went to the Orange County Sheriff's Department Medal of Valor Award, recognizing several individuals from our city, and it was good to be part of that. Last week, I had an opportunity to speak to the Rotary Club, which was a good opportunity. The week before, I had an opportunity to speak to the Coral Thrift Shop, which is one of the landmark associations in the city and doing great, great things. The week before, last week, I was in Washington DC on other business, had a chance to meet with the senate, the House and Senate Appropriations Committee, looking for more funding for our, our sand projects. I also had the opportunity to meet with, with our representative staff on community funding, and we're, we're, we're making progress on that with both appropriators and, and the funding. Also met, had an opportunity to meet with the State Department official regarding lifeguards for the summer, that the State Department runs a program to bring people from all over the, the country to work here in the US as part of the State Department program, and maybe we can get a lifeguard or two out of that. This past Monday, we, we, Andy and I were invited to testify in Sacramento. We attended that. We've already, Andy's already reported on that. Last, the week before, I attended the Supreme Court hearing on Grant's Pass hearing, where we were able to hear the arguments, and our brief got mentioned and discussed and debated, and I think it was good that we did the brief and made, made an impact on the Supreme Court, I, I think, and if anybody wants more information of that, I can give you more information on that. That's my schedule.
I forgot one thing.
Okay.
Got to sign up my son for junior lifeguards, and the process was much smoother this year. So, thank you to Beaches Parks and Rec for changing the online signup way that they did it. It was a lot easier, so thank you.
All right, let's, city, city manager report?
Let me go first. This is great.
Oh, did we skip the city attorney?
No, this is great.
We can go back.
It's all she's going to say is that she's like honored to work here, some cheesy thing like that. I don't know what. No, first, thank you, mayor and councilman, and then again, I, I really appreciate the, the fact that we had such a lively discussion tonight about our coastline. It's coming at us fast and furious, and I think that's great. We have a lot of people very interested in what's happening in San Clemente for various reasons, and it, it's going to come at us fast. Again, we just found out about this opportunity to get some sand from the county just a few days ago, and so we will try everything we can to keep the council and the public informed. It's hard because you don't know that we've got it for sure yet, so you don't want to announce something prematurely, but then when you get it, you've got to turn around and you've got to pay for it and get it here pretty quick. So, we'll try to keep you guys up to date, but we're, we're searching under every rock, if you will, for sand, work, under every rock for sand, but really appreciate the city council and your focus on this. I think that it's really critical for our community. I did want to point out that there are a couple of contracts that were approved. The RCH Group for Providing Sequel Compliance for the Federal Beach Sand Project in the amount, amount of 18,000, and BGB Design Group for the base of the pier rack, bike rack redesign, 19,890, and it's a pleasure to, what did you say you said? To serve the city of San Clemente.
All right, thank you. I would only add to your, you know, no matter what meeting I go to now, this city council has been able to raise the, the level of interest and concern about sand. Even, even at the, the Songs meeting I had last week, and there was elected officials from, from everywhere in Orange County, we, before the meeting started, everybody said, hey, we hear about your sand, we want, we, we support the effort, we're on the OCTA, we're, we're getting briefed on this. And we've also had the, you and I, Andy, have had the opportunity to meet with almost all the members of the OCTA and brief them on, on our concerns, but no matter where we go, the county, state, city, public officials, people know that San Clemente is about sand, and that's our number one priority this year, and we will continue to make the city and the county and the state aware of that. City attorney?
Thank you, mayor and council. The city manager gave my report, so.
All right.
You sure there's nothing you want to say?
Someone, someone and I make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, I'll move that we adjourn to the next regular meeting to be held on May 14th, 2024, at 4:00 PM for the purpose of conducting the 2426 Budget Workshop. The meeting will take place here in these city council chambers located at 910 Cali Negocio, second floor, San Clemente, and the next regular scheduled meeting is scheduled to take place May 21, 2024, closed session to begin at 5:00 PM with the regular business meeting to begin at 6:00 PM. The meetings take place here in these council chambers located at 910 Cali Negocio, second floor, San Clemente.
I was just going to interrupt. Yes, so we just changed, thank you, council member Noblock, for that adjournment notice. We just today confirmed that the date for the budget workshop has been changed to May 21st. To May 21st.
I had that on my calendar, and I was reading off of this, and I apologize.
I thought, do I interrupt?
My motion was modified to include May 21, not the 14th.
He was on such a roll.